One nation under God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right. Group of posting, a copy of this notice was delivered to the following on 7/2, 2021, fax to Star News. Posted at the Black Earth Municipal Building and Black Earth Post Office. Posted on the Black Earth website, www-blackearthwisconsin.com. And fax for postings to State Bank across Plains, Black Earth Branch. Next, we'll take public comment.
Hi, my name is Renee Greenland. I live here on Mill Street in Black Earth. And I saw in the last newsletter about the question of whether water fluoridation is intended.
Sorry.
And so I sent an email with some information, with a couple of links to some studies in regards to that. It was noted in the newsletter that it appears that topical application of fluoride is a more effective means as far as preventing dental issues. But I do have other information that I found. I've done a lot of research in the past on this topic. The first article online, "The Fluoride Debate: Pros and Cons of Fluoridation," was published by the National Institutes of Health in September of 2018. And it does share information that there are potential neurotoxic effects of consumption of fluoridated water, especially in children and others who may consume more water, such as manual laborers, patients with diabetes, athletes, and so forth. And then also, I know that you may be aware that it has potentially been linked to cancer as a carcinogen. And then as far as the second study from the Biomed Central website, "Developmental Fluoride Neurotoxicity," published in December of 2019. So as far as research articles go, these are pretty much the most current you can get because it does take a while for publishing after the research has been gathered. It also has concerns about the potential adverse side effects, particularly, again, neurotoxicity during early development. It shares that 14 recent cross-sectional studies from areas with naturally high fluoride concentrations in groundwater have supported previous findings of cognitive deficits in children who have elevated fluoride exposures. And the data shows that early life exposures were negatively associated with children's performance on cognitive tests. And so I did want to bring this information to your attention as you consider potentially discontinuing water fluoridation. I have, in the recent past, worked with foster care use, so I have firsthand experience with the devastating effects of cognitive disabilities and how it can impact families, children. I also do see potential for lower income or tight income families to be affected more significantly if there are negative side effects from water fluoridation, as they may be more likely to drink tap water. And then on a personal note, I shared that because of my personal concerns and prior research that I've done about drinking fluoridated water, I have not drank tap water in years. And I actually drive all the way to Rock Springs to gather living spring water that is tested weekly and is of a very high quality and a low endemic fluoride content. So I appreciate that you are considering discontinuing water fluoridation, as I find it to be quite a concerning practice, as many countries around the world have discontinued it after considering all the research that's been done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Anybody else from the public? Okay. Action item number five, discussion action on electrical substation.
Eric.
You can go ahead.
Well, Eric asked me to talk, so I'm going to connect the dots, right? So I think it was, you know, March, maybe, we presented a report of your options. Now, why, about a year ago, there was an event at the substation that took it out, maybe more than once. And so you have one electrical substation that gets power off the transmission system and delivers power into your distribution system, which you cover a large area. That one substation has served you well, and there's nothing wrong with it. But if it's out of service, you don't have any power. So it's one of those events that is unlikely, but is impactful. It's the most impactful thing that could happen to your electric distribution system is the loss of a transformer in a substation. And it hasn't had any problems for many, many years, and then you had a little hiccup, and it made us take a pause and say, what are our options to protect ourselves against a prolonged outage in case that one piece of equipment fails? We looked at three options, ones to lease that capacity from another utility, to build a second transformer at the existing substation, or to build a new substation with a second transformer. The new transformer with, the new substation with second, with the second transformer on your system was the best option for many reasons. Primarily the tiebreaker, it was the diversity of load, how it was split between the two, and the, you take all of your system and reduce the exposure to one seventh of the load is on any one heater, there'd be seven heaters. So you'd have a nice diversity in terms of the impact of any fault on your distribution system and the number of customers affected. For a very similar price though, adding it to the existing substation. The existing substation is very constrained in property. It would be very difficult to construct these sites, but we're always up for a challenge. I just think a little more spacious site would be in order and, like I said, the value of having it split from seven. I say that only as review, just so you know why we're here today, why the importance of the substation. And with that, I guess you've decided to go forward with that substation and how to finance it. And we could talk you through the steps that will happen if you say, go ahead and start designing and getting permits and such for a substation, what that would look like through the completion. I think that's probably what you're after, right? A little bit of information. Eric is prepared to talk about that.
And, you know, just for some of the North Ward members that weren't here before, we used to have some backup from a line that was fed from Alliant from Mount Werke. And so if we ever lost our substation, when that one was built in 2001, 1, 2, 3, 4, something like that, we'd have partial backup, back feed from a line. That has gone away, so there is no backup.
The wires are there.
Yeah.
And, you know, if you would pay for it, that was one of the options. It's not full backups, partial. And we could spend some money and put it back in service and then pay an annual fee. That was the other option we looked at. We'd have to add another one besides that to cover your whole load. And by the time you do the annual payment, it's, it's better to put it in plant value here and then rate a return on it. And, you know, those are, that was the part that I didn't mention, why we dismissed that one as not the best option.
Oh, Eric. I'm Eric with Forster Electric Engineering. Thanks for having us.
That was great.
But anyways, schedule-wise, I just wanted to touch on that and talk with Shelley and Sean. Just kind of wanted to hit some, you know, kind of give you the mile-high view of what we're looking at here. Once we are approved to start the design of the substation, we have to file a certificate of authority with the Public Service Commission for the state of Wisconsin. It's going to take about six months to make that happen. By the time we generate the document and it gets approved at the Public Service Commission, we also have to file a LRF with ATC, which stands for a Letter of Interconnection, Load Interconnection Request, Load Interconnection Request. Again, up to two months. That can happen on a parallel track with the CA. Along with that, we'll have our design, all kind of moving, all three of them, for a goal of having your substation in service. Again, it depends on when we get approval, if that happens tonight or if it happens in a month. You know, you're probably in that 18-month range before your substation is operational. You know, within about three to four months after approval, we'll start getting some of the larger items out to bid. By the larger items, I mean your substation transformer, the regulators, the substation package, the actual steel and such. The reason we do that is they're longer lead time items, so the manufacturers of those items need, you know, a year or so to actually produce that equipment. I guess, you know, interrupt me if you want, if you've got questions, comments, anything, as I'm going through this. You know, the other component I just want to speak briefly on, and then I'll wait for some questions if there are any. We provided a cost in our report. One thing we've experienced, you know, in our market is metals escalation. I mean, I think everybody's heard how, you know, building materials are going up. We see that especially in our market because of the price of copper and raw steel. So, you know, Sean and Shelley expressed some concern. Just want to make sure that, you know, obviously, you're going through and borrowing the money. We've reviewed our estimate and provided an updated estimate. And, yeah, I guess.
Question about 30% more?
No, not quite. I think we're within, you know, 10% to 15% or less.
So we guess we covered it?
Yeah. We hope, and we're hoping, everything's cyclical. If my crystal ball is working, I'm hoping, you know, we're going to come down on the other side.
Long-term futures are down 60%. So if the metal follows, hopefully, we're going to.
Right, right. That's, you know, we're betting on that.
Did we have a copy of what you're telling us about the prices, the rework of your?
Of our estimate? We shared, it was a pretty high-level, you know, just an email that went to Shelley and Sean.
Yeah, that I did send out to Ellers for financing. How much is it?
There was something that was brought up on Thursday, and Forster really kicked it in gear and had it to us by Friday, so lucky to have that.
What's the, what's the price then?
About $3 million, right?
No.
$300,000.
I think you take it $100,000.
Yeah.
So we're, we're, a million, between $1,007,000 and $1,008,000, somewhere in that. It was the study, it was one figure, right? And now it's 1.7?
Yeah.
I got to tour a facility a few years back that remanufactures large substation transformers at the Solomon Corporation. I assume you guys are familiar with them? Have you, do you work with them? Has that been considered to, if it's a backup substation? I'm not too familiar with electricity. I deal with water flow, so I don't know if that's something that could be.
We can bid that. And I have bid that before. The, the plant that I'm, that I, I haven't been to Solomon, Kansas, but I have been to Jordan, Minnesota, the other plant that is very well-known for rewinding transformers. And I know of some utilities who have transformers that you could purchase that could be rewound. So we, we shopped those units. You would have to buy a unit from some other utility, send it there, have it rewound, to see if that would come out as a lower price. That was one estimate we requested. We don't have prices yet in terms of connecting the dots on that. Last time I bid it, it was the same price as a new. But with the metals changes and you providing scrap material, we're hopeful that maybe you could get a better deal on that.
Yeah.
That would be part of our bidding process.
Useful life on that, same as new?
Yeah, no, I know with Jordan, they redesigned and they enhance it. And Solomon, I think, just rewinds it.
Yeah.
So with the Jordan, you get a three- to five-year warranty, and you have longevity, maybe longer than some new transformers on those remanufactured. So it's not a step back, but it hasn't been cheaper. So I, I always look out for that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of like analogy to the home appliances. It's like you hear about grandma has the washing machine from 1953 with like a 5-cent part that needs to be replaced every 10 years.
Right.
And not the bad mouth the engineers, because I'm kind of one myself, but like, you engineer and engineer, and now things are so fancy, they break in five years and it's, you have to replace them every five years.
The more the engineers, the taller it gets, right?
Yeah.
Because they take all parts until it doesn't work anymore and they stop.
Yeah. But. Yeah, just good to know that you guys are considering that.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good, and, and the, yeah, especially with the metals varying. And we're going to kind of catch the wave. We'd like to see the cost of new ones come down and the interest rates stay low. If you hit that intersection, you know, it will be sweet. But, you know, we're, we're prepared for either. The estimates that Eric redid, he called manufacturers and got prices today, but, you know, that's if we ordered it today. That's the only reason he's saying, you know, we're hoping, right? You know, we're hoping it doesn't like go through the roof the other way.
And even our supplier, the one transformer manufacturer that we work with quite a bit for substations, and they released that budgetary number, it was different than, you know, obviously it was increased since we did your study, and with the caveat that this is what he knows today.
Yeah.
Right. And he gave us the best price he could.
Do you take a percentage, then, of the scrap that you take from the site? Do you guys take a cut of that scrap? Or would it be like as if we turned it in ourselves as a cut to secure?
Right, I think in the, if a transformer is rewound, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we find a transformer candidate that would work at Jordan Transformer, there's a credit that is taken off of that, basically. They give you a price.
The manufacturing facility keeps the copper they take out. What they reuse is the core steel and the tank. So they reuse the steel, which is fine, but they put a new winding, copper windings in it. So they're taking the copper out, recycling it, and buying new put in it.
And that's what the word new is for a transformer? A transformer is never really new exactly?
The insulation and the copper is the new part, in oil.
Right, so that's the remanufactured.
Right.
Right, a brand-new transformer would be entirely from the ground up.
Yeah, entirely from the ground up.
Right, which we're not doing.
We're going to look at both options, yeah, and make a recommendation to staff of the best option. You know, we'll weigh, you know, a new transformer with the warranty against remanufactured transformer and the price and their warranty, and say, you know, here's our recommendation to you, and it may be the remanufactured one, or it may be the brand-new one.
But you guys don't take a cut of any of those?
No, 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 no.
And then with the old line that's laid from the Mont Cora, Alliant deal, it looks like we're never going to do that again because we're going to build a new substation. Is there anything left there to scrap underground?
It's not ours.
It's all their stuff?
It's Alliant's, yeah.
We scrap everything we can scrap?
Yeah, right.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, the, the wires are still there, and they still come to the same pole. So you could put a jumper over there and connect again, but they've got the metering and regulation and over curve protection.
I'm just making sure we recycle everything. Because we're not going to go back.
There's probably a pole I could pull out, but I don't know.
No, I mean, metal. If there's any metal that we all.
But it's not ours.
Pull it.
That's not, right. At that point, that's all, that's all Alliant's.
Okay.
One last question. Does building two substations like this, working together, does it increase the general, does it like reduce the load on one? Having two together kind of increases the life expectancy, working it less hard, or?
Yes. Well, I mean, heat is the enemy of the transformer. So if you can spend less time in, you know, pushing the temperature of the paper, insulation, and there is made with craft paper, and, you know, it's embedded, you know, immersed in oil. So it lasts for a long time if you keep oxygen away from it, moisture away from it, and don't heat it up. So the heating is what's going to get you extra life.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, faults and stuff, on your system, if you got it split up amongst two of them rather than one, a fault will weaken, if it's spread, right? Those transformers as well, so that reduces the life. So by splitting them up, kind of reducing your liability there as well.
Half of the faults are on new transformers instead of all faults on one.
And how old is our existing transformer?
That was 90, oh, it was about 2000.
Early 2000.
Early 2000.
And the old ones were overheating, if I remember right?
Um.
Had a hot spot in it or something?
Oh, I did, yeah. Yeah, I guess I did look at that.
Yeah, it did, it was. So, remember that guy?
I do, yeah. And you know if that was repaired?
No, no, that's why they put the substation up and repaired.
Oh, okay, the one.
The old one was overheating and running hot.
And the other, the other ATCs, the transmission utility, they, they were planning to do some rework here.
Right.
And so they, they were encouraging you to give a new transformer anyway.
Yeah.
And that's why Alliant, you know, stepped up and did the backup so that they could do that, the work. It, there was some, there's some money behind the scenes.
It was a, yeah.
But it worked to your advantage, and it served you all for 20 years, and hopefully another 30 years.
Right, exactly.
Capacity for substations for growth? And someday we need a large amount of growth within, say, an industrial park or whatever?
Well, we should talk about that. You know, whatever, you're only as good as the existing size of transformer with all the fans running and, you know, like, so I don't know if that buying a bigger transformer than what you already own is going to give you much value. But when that one's replaced, if you take a step up, then you would, would have more capacity. So, you know, I, again, when we price the transformers, we would, we'd, you know, look at this size and maybe a size up and see, you know, is it worth spending a little bit more to, you know, it's something you're not going to realize till down the road, but if a big industrial load comes into town, you know, your other choice is to put in a third transformer, which is not unheard of either. So it, I guess.
It'd be a good thing.
Yeah. There'd be, you know, people that charge for it, right? Would be that more old. And I just, so you understand, I didn't really explain, I assume that you know, it's what, our, our business model, our engineering consulting firm, we advise you, we work for you, we're not a contractor. So, you know, we're going to go and fill all those paperwork that you need to do when you build a substation, and write specs to you, get good, so that you get good products that serve you for a long time, put them out for public bid, and give you advice on what's the best course of action. Help you through this whole process.
There'll be a lot of, these two will probably be very used to us communicating with them on a daily to weekly basis for the next foreseeable future once the project's approved.
Nobody uses it. I, I guess I have a question on the land acquisition. I mean, is that running kind of in tandem with all of the PSC filing and all of those things?
Correct, I didn't touch on that, and apologize for that. But, yeah, we'll have to work closely with you. And we can have that discussion offline as to how you want to handle that. We can be available as much as, as much or as little as you need to assist with that. And we can get that, I mean, we can get that ball rolling, you know, start, start that process.
So we need to acquire the land?
Yeah.
You guys don't handle that part of it?
We can identify sites. We can figure out the size of the site. If you want us to approach landowners and we can offer, I usually use a real estate person that's adept at that. If you have a local person, I'd be happy to work with them.
Village attorney, you know, definitely.
And then somebody's got to write the offer to purchase. So like, if I work with the real estate guy that I'm used to working, he gets easements for utilities all over the state. So then he usually walks away with a batch of cookies or something, you know, for his time.
So when your, your bid does not include an inquiry of land?
It does, it does. The budget includes the acquisition of land.
With your real estate?
Yeah, I mean, whether it's in our contract or a separate contract, it, money's in the budget.
And it would be cheaper than our attorney because this is what he or she does for a living, and it's so much more efficient, you know, turning that out?
Yeah, they, they've had success in explaining to people their options and, and getting some fair, equitable offer that, you know, that's what we're trying to do is make everybody happy.
If you have somebody that's, that's in their wheelhouse, that's what they.
Yeah, right.
Do you have land picked out of these sites?
You know, there's, there's some that kind of, that would be a good use of land, you know, that's not otherwise used for other purposes. And I, you know, so I think we can make a case. But if, if not that, if any, the closer you are to the existing transmission line, the less cost it's going to be for you. So we, we want to get close to the transmission line. I say that, but maybe it isn't you. I mean, it's, it's, American Transmission Company will actually build the, the line to your site. So I guess it's saving all of us in the state some money to get closer to the transmission and less exposure, you know, so that you don't have a wire slapped together and trip out your substation.
Was that up in your original?
Yeah.
The one I'm talking about? Is there any original one?
Yeah, we had a, we actually did, you know, laid out a.
I, I remember seeing, and I remember we double-checked it on there, but I don't remember if it was listed, like whose spot that was, whose land it was.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't identify it. I think we know what, you know, it's usually subject to negotiation.
Yeah, it's not something you want out there before you approach them.
So was, was your bid including, you were just talking about maybe actually a third transformer? Is your bid for the compound big enough to add another transformer right away? Or do we, would we have to expand later?
Okay, in the, the budget for land acquisition, I think is generous enough to get two transformers. And I usually lay it out so that you can add a second one. You know, like, on an acre, I can get two transformers, but I think we have, we've budgeted two or three right. So I, I think, you know, you can landscape it, hide it, you can, it's good.
Any more questions?
All right, someone may need from us.
Yeah, what do you need from us tonight? Well, we got to figure out what we're wanting, how we want it, so.
So you're, you're going to, you know, be looking at coming up with the money for it, right?
Yeah.
So if, if you, if you find that you can afford that, and you say, get started, we would put together a scope of what our services would be, and we can offer something so you have protection, you know, what we said we'd do for how much. The bid, I, it's not really the, it's a budget that we put together, because it's only our part of, the part of it, you know, there's all the, the acquisition of things that, that you're going to be spending. So that budget is also what we set up as a, as a thing that we track through the whole process as we bid things, how do we compare the budget. We would set all that up and get started with the filing with the Public Service Commission.
Okay, so if, if and when the board has it on here, and if they decide to approve that, that's yours.
Yeah, and so you can, you can bail on this at any time, right? Right up until you sign a contract to buy something. So, you know, we can, we can go to the Public Service Commission, and what they're doing is giving you confidence because their engineers, their accountants are looking at it saying, one, you can afford it, two, if it's needed for the public convenience, a necessity. You know, they're, they're looking out for the public. You know, we're not settling you a, a line of coal here. You know, this, this is really necessary. So that gives you some confidence. I, I think that's a really logical next step. If you say that, you know, well, we didn't get permission, well, that ended it. But if, if you get permission, or if they're concerned, or you're concerned, right up until we get the first set of bids, and we see that the prices came in below or above what we said they were going to estimate that we could be, could be, you're not obligated to anything except that the money you spent gets the VA.
Okay. Good.
Since Brian's here from Ellers, do you have any questions for them on this?
When do you think you file the VA?
If, if you voted on it tonight, next week, because I don't think I would do it on Friday, but, yeah, we would, we would want to get that going right away.
Okay.
And, you know, because they, they take about six months.
Right.
The staff is kind of scattered in there behind, so they're like, just get it in It's probably going to take us three weeks to file it, so, you know, and then spend the time for them to deem the application. It, it's probably going to take us three weeks to file it, so, you know, and then, then the time to, for them to deem the application complete and then, then they take, then, then there's law, uh, legislation actually that, that forces the staff to act on it within a certain period of time.
Yep.
They hate that.
So, if there's any action we need to take on the presentation, so. All right, so let's go into item B, discussion action on initial resolution authorizing nine point eight zero five obligation, uh, general obligation bonds for substation project.
Brian, that's you.
Oh, good.
It's all you now.
Do you want to put anything on screen? I do have some printed handouts in my packet that I can hand out to board members. And I don't know if you want to put it on screen as well.
Is that what you sent me?
Yeah.
Okay, let me see.
I don't think it was in their packet though, is what I'm.
Oh.
You just had the, uh, I think you just had the quarrel for the reason.
Hang on, everybody on the line. This is the pre-sale report?
Yeah.
Uh, just as we go here too, just so, if I understand this right, Shelley, B and C, um, D and E is B and C together. Right? And then.
Yep.
That's because they can be in the general obligation bonds. Um, since the other one's a taxable bond, the eight eighty-five is a different refinancing. So, it's not four things for refinancing, it's three with D and E being your financing.
That's the main thing.
Yep, yep, yep.
I, I, yeah, I just.
I'll, I'll walk through it.
Yeah.
Here we go. All right, do I have the right thing up on screen here?
Uh, yeah, and I can start with A, but if you guys want, I can.
I would like it.
Yeah.
I got A here.
Handscapped this here. At minimum, the board members. Okay, so, uh, you guys don't know me. I am Brian Ramroth with Ellis. Uh, been your municipal advisor for some time. Um, if you remember, Don, uh, last attended virtually, uh, your last meeting. And then I kind of jumped on after my other virtual meeting ended. Uh, means I can be everywhere at once. Great. Um, so, but with that said, it is great to meet you all. I was, uh, very glad that you guys were meeting in person. That way I'm kind of able to, um, okay, you got something. And then I kind of ran out, so I apologize. The rest of you may have to look on the TV, but that's probably prettier than I am. So, um, we're looking at, uh, two issues here. And I think we'll talk about A first because that will be, uh, probably a little longer than B. Uh, but that said, it has been a while since you guys have issued in the public market, um, looking for financing. So, I'm going to take a little bit of time, uh, to go through A, um, just so you kind of understand, uh, what, what you're getting into when you're issuing a, a public issuance. So, you have a couple of options when you go out for debt. Um, it's not like getting a mortgage where you can just kind of go to your local bank and you're looking to get a mortgage. Uh, here, you, you do have a lot of larger underwriting firms that are interested in municipal securities, that being the bonds that you are looking to sell. Um, in addition to that, you could go to your local bank and ask for money. You've been doing that historically. And those are some of the debt issuances that we are refinancing. The reason for that is because of the public market, kind of like when you bid a project, um, you just find the lowest, uh, cost of issuance for interest rates and then also what they're going to charge you, um, for that initial issuance. In addition to that, there's the, um, Board Commissioners of Public Lands and the State Trust on Loan Program, uh, kind of what a lot of municipalities will use as easy money that comes with even higher interest rates. So, as I kind of went along there, we went from low, the public market issuance, low interest rate environment. Banks, kind of middle ground, they typically benchmark themselves a little bit better than the Board Commissioners of Public Lands and then that BCPL. So, that said, the public issuance though comes with a higher cost of issuance. Once you start to hit about, in this interest rate market, about a half a million dollars or higher, you start to see, uh, some economies, even though you're paying more cost of issuance. And I'll walk through what that specifically is for each transaction. Um, it's still cheaper because of the cheaper interest rate and interest rates over time can save you a lot of money. So, that said, um, does that kind of make sense in terms of the options, uh, in, in general that you have available looking at just kind of general projects? Of course, as well, there's state, state and nationwide programs, uh, you know, water and sewer utilities can utilize the DNR um, through their EIF, Environmental Improvement Fund, uh, loan program. Uh, here, you know, we're not identifying anything there for, you know, state or federal aid, uh, when it comes to that. So, what we're specifically talking about is just kind of, uh, what I'll call a plain and simple public market issuance, similar to a, a public project where you're just going out to bid this and say, who's ever going to give us the lowest interest rate? We'll move forward with you guys. So, um, that said, the purposes for, um, twenty twenty-one A are refunding two banknotes uh, that are at a two point three five interest rate or higher. We're realizing a little bit of savings, uh, over the life of that with what would prospectively be the new interest. Um, just know that, let's say, tonight you say, we want to move forward, uh, with this initial resolution. This doesn't mean that you have to sell. You may notice later in the document it says that actually sale day is going to be at your next meeting in August and presumably there could be some market movement there. And we are on kind of a little bit of a narrow, uh, savings there. So, for any reason the interest rate spiked, we see that it would be a bad idea to move forward with that sale. We would advise you as such to pull those portions of that sale. Uh, maybe only go forward with the last portion, which is the new, what we call new money, um, in that that's your substation project. I think the other thing that'll be important to talk about is kind of, um, timing and truly if you want to go forward with this. And the only reason I say that is because it sounds like you have a bit of time for that construction authorization to go through. You also have a bit of time until those project costs are actually going to start coming until you get those invoices from whichever contractor you come with. So, I will say, um, admittedly, this is kind of an early time to be considering this. Um, but at the same token, just know you do have three years to spend the money when you issue bonds. In addition to that, we're kind of in a historically low interest rate environment. And if you'd certainly like to take advantage of that environment and, um, kind of mitigate your interest rate risk, obviously now you can lock in at that rate, um, whatever it would be at your, you know, sale day, um, at your next meeting in August. So, if you're kind of curious on what we're, uh, issuing as kind of a pledge or your collateral here, it's the levying authority that you have, um, as a municipality. So, you're issuing general obligation bonds, you have an option to do that, or revenue bonds. Uh, if you have a revenue stream that's applicable, uh, we're doing general obligation bonds here. One, because they're cheaper and you're combining all these purposes. We did look at an option of splitting this issue into a general obligation and a revenue, see what that would kind of look like. As a stance of reason, you're adding more cost of issuance there as you start adding more issues. So, we produce what's called an official statement and that's basically what the underwriting firms review to say, okay, how creditworthy are you as a municipality? So, we help put that together for you. We advise you on, you know, the various components of this transaction. That's kind of where you get, uh, our fees and, and the municipal advisor fees. You'll, you'll also notice that there's, uh, a legal counsel or what's called bond counsel to actually, uh, issue this debt. Uh, you do have to have a, a legal opinion, that's state statute, uh, from an authorized bond counsel. You can't just have your municipal attorney, if they're not a bond attorney, they cannot draft a legal opinion, uh, to issue the debt for you. So, just in case you're kind of wondering, why are we using bond counsel and not our, uh, what, what you may call normal legal counsel? Um, that's the reason for that is that there's actually a state statute of who you have to use to issue that legal opinion if you're, uh, issuing a municipal security. Um, the other thing to recognize, um, just kind of how we're doing this, I've kind of mentioned a couple of times, kind of bidding it like, like you would a project. Um, we're going to take bids on the morning of sale day, which, um, a few pages, it depicted in a few pages in, um, August third. And, um, but before we get to that point, we have to create that document that I call an official statement. Um, so we also have the scheduled timeline to do that. Truly, the time to kind of decide if we're going to pull something would be that July twenty-seventh date, which is the distribute, the official statement. I would even say even a, a little earlier before that due diligence call. Um, and the reason I say that is because that's something that, uh, bond counsel, who's, who also works as that line item, and that's called disclosure counsel, they'll be reviewing that document for you, basically making sure that everything is, uh, complete and, uh, does not have any omissions for you. Um, a lot of municipalities are doing that who, one, don't issue a lot or two, um, just kind of have too much going on to review the official statement themselves. Um, they, they'll walk through that document. Since you do not issue a debt in the public market a lot, it was, uh, my recommendation that you do use this service, um, to kind of help you go through that document and ensure that everything is complete and correct and they actually issue a legal opinion. Of course, we go through that document with you as well. We just do not operate in the capacity of legal counsel, so we cannot issue that legal opinion for you. Uh, so kind of more or less acts as insurance against the, uh, SEC when you're issuing a municipal security on that official statement. So, that's a document that investors are going to review for the life of the loan, uh, kind of when they're looking to see, should we purchase this municipal debt? So, I would say you can kind of make su, we'll, we'll keep an eye obviously on the interest rates. I think if there's any trepidation as it, as it comes to the elect, you know, the substation project or wanting to wait and saying, okay, we're, we'd rather wait, I, I would say truly the decision time would be kind of that week of July twentieth, um, to, to pull anything from this. Um, but we can also certainly talk about it tonight. Um, I just kind of wanted to let you know that just because you're, uh, you know, you may pass this initial resolution, it does not mean that you're absolutely committing to the funding. The only point that you really get dinged is if you were to submit that, uh, official statement to the public and then say, oh, wait, we're pulling the sale, then you actually have to issue a notice saying, we're pulling the sale for yada, yada, yada. You know, then underwriters might be a little, you know, less likely to bid on your, uh, next issuance uh, should you need to go to the public market after that. So, if that makes sense, that's why I would say pull it before you distribute or disseminate anything to the public. Um, just making sure that, you know, you're not sending out any, uh, kind of negative, um, energy coming back towards the village. You don't want to say some, you don't want underwriters kind of questioning, uh, what's, what's going on here. So, that's all I'll say about kind of the idea and making sure you understand the initial resolution isn't kind of, uh, now we're stuck in doing the sale. Um, so, I don't know if you guys want me to pause now. We can kind of talk about this timing further, um, or if you'd like me to kind of move forward a little bit into the other components of this.
Right, maybe any questions?
Interest rates are ripe, you know, the sooner we get to them, the better.
Well, inflation's going to happen eventually, so.
Okay. So, I'll keep going. Um, there's, there's a couple of other, other components of our executive summary that are important. I, I would say the highest of importance to just kind of understand, I've already walked through the competitive bid and how you're working through that, but just understand that these will be callable. We've put them, uh, at a callable date that is still attractive where you don't get punished on the interest rate. You can ask for a call at any time. However, though, now you're going to, uh, get underwriters that are bidding with higher interest rates uh, to mitigate their investor's risk, uh, so just understand that. So, typically what you're seeing here with any debt, um, over ten years, um, you're kind of looking at like an eight-year window of non-callable. So, we've kind of landed there. You'll see it, uh, March first, twenty twenty-seven or any date thereafter. So, you can call them three one twenty twenty-seven should the interest rates be at a lower rate or you'd like to restructure, and I'll kind of get into those two things. Um, but you do have the ability to call this. It's depicted not only here in the executive summary, uh, but there's some fun colored lines, uh, when we get to the numbers that kind of show what maturities, uh, would be callable. So, just kind of understand that that's, um, built in there as well. Um, some of the other things that you are issuing, the general obligation debt, so what the security is, is your ability to levy. However, you're going to be abating the levy, uh, through several components. Um, one being the electric revenues for the substation project. And that's why you'll see my debt schedule is broken out by purpose. So, you have a total debt payment, but you're going to be allocating the debt, uh, through various funds. So, just kind of understand that. Um, in addition to that, um, you do have in twenty twenty-one B, um, that we're, uh, issuing, that's going to be a full, uh, kind of abatement between sewer and electric, uh, because that was, that original purpose was for sewer and electric. So, but I'll, I'll get into that. Um, so just kind of understanding those two components. When you look at, uh, past the schedule, um, table one is our financing plan. Uh, just kind of looking at your sources and uses is kind of what we, uh, call it in the office. And that's just kind of looking at, all right, what are our borrowing needs? And so what you're seeing there for twenty twenty-one A are your payoff amounts for your, um, the loans that you're going to be paying off and refinancing. And then the third component being the substation, the amount that we've put in there, uh, for you to be wired to pay for that project. So, uh, we bumped that up, uh, kind of in line with the engineering company's, um, recent estimate. And so we've also added, I think, whatever I added in there, still had a little extra buffer for that. Just know if we've decided when we get to sale day that we'd rather not issue that much. If you said, okay, we feel better about prices coming down, et cetera, we can always bring that back, um, at the point at which we're looking to distribute the official statement. The other, uh, components of this is you have a little bit of funds that were already budgeted for and not yet used for a payment. So, just understand you'll see a negative forty-three thousand there for, that's your prior issue debt service funds, uh, available. So, obviously, since that's allocated, you would downsize the need for that payoff. Um, and then the issuance expenses are broken down for you. I've kind of shown them all in terms of what the typical issuance expenses would be. Uh, just understand outside of ours, it's really hard to know what the expenses will be from these other firms. So, we typically budget that a little higher. Uh, but that said, I've kind of walked through the municipal advisor, that's us, Ellis, uh, bond counsel, disclosure counsel. Um, and then the underwriter's discount is basically what the underwriter takes on the day of sale to kind of mitigate their risk for kind of holding the bonds until they've sold them to their investors. So, typically right now, we're at about ten bucks a bond. We've put in here twelve bucks a bond, um, for the twenty twenty-one A to just kind of provide for a little bit of buffer there. Um, and then paying agent, we typically, uh, recommend that, um, if you get what's called term bonds. That's where they make groups of payments, um, and you're making your normal annual payments. But, um, how, uh, the investors are receiving it is actually a larger group payment, uh, maybe in every three years or something like that. Um, you have to issue special notices for that. Uh, almost ninety-nine percent of communities will use a paying agent for that, just kind of understanding that, um, you know, we have some extra hurdles to go through if you're not used to dealing with DTC, which is the clearinghouse, uh, for municipal bonds and where you're going to send payments. If you're not used to dealing with them, it also can be beneficial to use a paying agent. So, I've put that in here as just kind of a recommendation to use that, um, but you certainly do not have to. I will say the savings that you're realizing also kind of pay for that, not only at issuance, but at, um, you know, that's an annual fee that you'd be paying at four hundred dollars a year, and I show that later. Uh, but just understand that that's kind of paid for by the savings as well. But if you choose not to use that, you're going to be realizing a little bit more savings, about four hundred dollars a year. Um, so beyond that, looking at, um, a little bit of interest earnings, uh, that, that probably is a little low. Uh, now hearing about, uh, where we're at with the substation project, um, you'll probably have this money for a little longer. Um, that said, we can certainly provide you, what I've shown here is the LGIP annualized rate. Um, we have investment advisors that can kind of help you, uh, invest these debt proceeds. Um, and other municipal securities and other state statute, uh, allowable investments for the municipality to kind of get through this. So, just know, um, you certainly, if you're holding these funds, it's not like they're just sitting, um, in your piggy bank, uh, in Shelley's office. So, um, we can certainly invest these, make a little money. So we can certainly invest these, make a little money while you're waiting to spend to spend it. So that said, the same thing applies for 2021B. I just put them kind of side by side. You're going to see the same tables in both of these, but just to make sure that you're well informed, just understanding that 2021B has the same kind of all applicable areas there. You're only just refunding the 2017 bonds. The next page, you're looking at an amortization schedule. I think that's pretty much self-explanatory. The biggest thing to look at there certainly is the interest rates are first depicted for you there. And then at the bottom, there's a note of what we took that from. So that was the recent sale of a community that we've felt is kind of similar creditworthiness. And so we've also added a 25 basis points or a quarter of a percent buffer to each maturity there. So just to understand that math, at first 2022 for the Belgium sale, they're paying 0.3%, whereas here we've bumped that up to kind of give you a little bit of room just in case the market is creeping up. I will say it has slightly, probably about five basis points to date, but we're, we basically are doing sales every week, you know, so as we get more sales that are kind of in line with your creditworthiness, we'll be updating these rates. I'll be talking with Shelley to kind of see where we're at in terms of the savings or projected savings of these refundings. So just know that that's kind of a weekly practice for us, if not a daily practice. It certainly ends up getting closer to looking at distributing the official statement. Some of the other important tables here, just understand that the table four is looking at the total financing plan impact. I would say as a board member, this might be one of the more important ones outside of the next table, which is your savings, but financing plan tax impact, we're looking at basically what does this do for our debt service levy and what does that mean for our tax rate? So this is an important table, this is table four again, kind of look through. So this table kind of working left to right looks at your existing debt pre and post refunding. And the reason I show that is so you can understand what's going to happen if you were to refund this debt. And then the pre-refunding is to kind of understand how we've changed your annual taxes. So if you take the rightmost column in blue and the rightmost column in orange, you can kind of understand the change there. And that bottom right part of this table, you're looking at savings of about an average of $37, mainly because we're restructuring that 2017 banknote and then we're also restructuring your 2019, 2020. So we're kind of pushing some principal up, trying to get some savings on the back end in all issuances, even though truly that 2017, we're just getting rid of a balloon payment, but we were actually realized savings there too, just based on that interest rate. So just understand refunding this debt kind of makes sense in terms of how much you'll be saving annually with your existing debt payments versus new debt payments. And that's even with, or I should say that's your just existing versus new. The other thing, just understanding that your abatements there are kind of simply shown as I walked through earlier, instead of levying for this each year, submitting that on your levy limit worksheet, you'd be abating that or you'd certainly have the option to levy for it. We just recommend if you're doing that, do it for one-time purchases. Don't do it for operations. Don't say, hey, we can hire a new person because we have this debt for 10 years, at least we can give him a 10-year job. Municipalities do do that, please don't do that. If you do want to use your extra capacity that you'll have because you can claim all of your GO debt, please do that for only purchases because you obviously then can't change it if it's recurring in the future when this debt drops off. So just kind of understanding how to play the Wisconsin game, as we call it. But that said, that kind of goes through, I would say, the best summation page in terms of the numbers. The table five is another important table as it came to our decision to look at the general obligation debt capacity and whether or not to split this between GO and revenue or combine it all as GO. You know, mainly, like I said, we're getting lower interest rates when we do GO debt versus revenue debt, so that electric substation comes at a cheaper cost. In addition to that, you're realizing some efficiencies when it comes to cost of issuance as well, only doing two instead of three. So with that said, you still have plenty of capacity here. We're already on our, well on our way to the end of 2021. So that said, you would, you'd still, even if you issued this, have capacity of $1.4 million. Hopefully, there's no surprise project that's worth that amount, but that said, you do have that capacity. Then going into 2022 and beyond, as this amortizes, you're gaining that capacity back. So just understand that back kind of into, when we start to see about 75% is when I bring it up, sometimes I'll just skip over this page if we don't even hit that. But that said, still having $1.4 million for the remaining four months of the year, I think gives you plenty of capacity in terms of if you needed emergency borrowing funds. But that said, could always issue revenue debt, which do not, does not hit this.
Sorry, looking, can you remind me, I think you talked on this last time, what determines the debt limit over time that that goes up in the blue on table five?
Sure, sure. So it's your total equalized value. Statutorily, you're allowed to issue, so this is in the Wisconsin constitution, 5% of your total equalized value, so that's including, you know, whatever values in your tax increment districts. So we're, we're looking at a projected equalized value and we're basically taking a five to six-year average and then discounting that 50%. So I think we're at about a 1% average in terms of that change. What that change typically is, is economic appreciation or net new construction. So if you beat that, obviously you have more capacity than, but that said, typically we take a pretty conservative approach there and we've taken 50% of your five-year average. So I can make sure to make a note for the sale day packet on specifically what that rate of inflation is for the EV. The next page is a look at your savings, I know this is probably real tiny. We kind of ran out of the large paper today. But it's real great to see on the screen, we can blow it up. But that said, we had to split this into two issues because of the taxable nature of the 2017 banknote. All that means is there's also state statutes that says you can only issue for certain purposes, tax exempt debt. Since this purpose was not a tax exempt purpose, bond counsel decided that this is a taxable in nature. So that said, taxable debt comes at a higher interest rate as well, similar to that revenue against GO comes at higher interest rate. Taxable versus tax exempt comes at a higher interest rate. The reason for that is if you were an investor, it's more attractive to have a tax exempt municipal security because you typically don't have to pay any of the federal or state income taxes on that investment. So just kind of understand why the taxable versus tax exempt, why one's cheaper. Just kind of wanted to quickly go through that.
What's taxable or tax exempt?
So there's, there's what's called enumerated purposes and you basically are only allowed to issue for certain things. There's about, I think, 32 of them. So I can send you the sheet. I have a few of them memorized, but it's kind of like water and sewer projects, road projects, fire, some fire projects, some, but beyond that.
Water and water utility related, huh?
No. No, those, those are, so you're, the original though, 2017 banknote was not, the substation is, yep. So I'm forgetting off the top of my head what the original 17 specifically was.
Payback.
Oh, yeah, you guys are, were paying back. So that would be kind of like an intergovernmental transfer that you were borrowing for and basically bond counsel identified that as not a enumerated purpose. So that's why 2017, that's why we have a B issues because that's going to be taxable. So the biggest thing that I'll note on this page, though, I wanted to combine it all because it's just way easier to see on one than kind of individually, but there is columns on the right-hand side that show it individually. You're really refunding any existing obligations for, you know, kind of a self-explanatory reason of savings. You guys are probably looking at refinancing your houses if you didn't already, but a lot of people did that this summer, myself included, realized some awesome savings. But that's, that's, so that's one of the main reasons for doing it specifically on the 2019 or the community park issuance and the streets and truck issuance, that's what we're doing, we're looking for that savings. So specifically on those, you kind of got to combine savings, just over $40,000 with that conservative buffer on the interest rate, so hoping for higher there. But then on the 2017 banknote, you'll note you have a balloon payment of 605,000 in 2027. The reason for that is because your local bank, although an option for financing, can't really go out longer than 10 years. They can say, yeah, we'll just reissue that in 10 years. So you'll see a lot of balloon structures like this. The idea behind refunding it now, you'll say, hey, that's in 2027, why don't we sleep on it? You don't know what the interest rate's going to be like in 2026 as we approach that, kind of seeing 10-year history, as I think I showed later in this, yep. You'll see that obviously we're kind of in a historic environment when it comes to the interest rate market. So that'll be a good time to refi this, stretch out the structure a little bit, and we actually don't need to quite that long, only until 2029, or excuse me, yeah, until 2029, bless you.
Thank you.
So that said, you know, we were able to kind of push up some principal there, you'll notice, and still have decent coverage when it comes to can your sewer utility revenues and electric utility revenues pay this along with the new substation and still be in a healthy position to have, you know, cash left over at the end of the year? The answer was yes. So we actually advanced some of that principal as well if you were to undertake this, that would be our recommendation. So with that said, you still realize about $11,000 savings on that 2017 banknote, which normally doesn't happen, but we're just kind of in such a low interest rate environment that you're able to kind of see that in this. So that said, you'll see I have at the way right, total savings column, that's the second most right column, and then the right most column is the annual debt cost, but total savings is 51,500. So you have a outstanding 2013 public market issuance. So you would have, if, let's say you didn't do this issuance, those annual costs would go away with 750, so now we're adding costs there. So just kind of understand that, and I'm including also the paying agent, which is just kind of arbitrary and unique to each deal. So we're adding, as you see in the later years, that jumps up to 1150. The reason for that is because now this specific transaction, you're subjecting yourself to continuing disclosure. We help you do that currently, so we're just saying for the last two years of this, we would continue to do so. The reason I show that is because obviously you need to understand what all the costs are to undertake this. You could certainly elect at that time to not use it, you're already paying for it. So I've kind of said for the first years, at least you can pay for it to to include this issue. But that said, I've also included that paying agent of $400 throughout the life of these loans, should you choose to use that. So like I said, there's a startup cost of that of the 850 and then the annual $400 paying agent fees. But that said, I net out those costs, so you're still at 55,634 when you include the rounding. The rounding is, you can go back to the sources and uses, but you have to issue in $5,000 blocks and so you usually end up rounding up to the next $5,000 in order to get there. So basically, that's extra money you use for debt service, so we include that in your savings, of course. There's a lot to go through and I evolved it. But I want to make sure it be thorough. I know Dawn kind of went through a lot of it, but I think, you know, you're actually at the point of initial resolution for both of these, so it is important for you to understand and make your educated decision when you're passing that resolution. So please keep me here all night if you'd like to to talk about what's involved in this. I love talking about it, obviously. So do not hesitate to ask questions. The last page, couple pages on both of these, so these will mirror each other, so just know that's why I'm not diving deep into the, the last page is what we call debt coverage. So we're, yep, we're looking at your water utility, although none of this new stuff has to do with water debt. We are your municipal advisor, we like to look at everything that's got dollar signs next to it for you. And so we're looking at revenue debt coverage because you have some existing revenue debt in the water fund and then you also have a portion of some GO debt that pays it, so that's what you see when you see all in. I'm just including all the debt and saying, can we keep the lights on and pay for our debt service? Lights on meaning can we pay our operating maintenance expenses? So that said, water utility is in a healthy position. I just wanted to review that just in case, you know, we found something and we needed to talk about something, but I would say with that, you still have debt capacity there, albeit, you know, we're at $50,000. The sewer debt, we're certainly restructuring some of that, refinancing that 2017 banknote, so it's important to understand, are we, do we still have coverage there? And the answer is yes. That is not on a revenue basis, though, like I said, we're issuing this GO. If you were to issue revenue, you actually pledge to have 1.25 coverage. Since you're not pledging that, you just want that one coverage, basically. Can we, are we producing enough revenues to pay for our debt service to keep the lights on? So this shows you're paying about, you're basically producing about $3 for every dollar of debt. And then on the, the tip four, or excuse me, is that three?
Three.
Three. We want to show that, that's another revenue stream that's paying some GO debt, just kind of understanding similar to the water utility, how are we doing there? Everything looked good in terms of that coverage. And then looking at what we're doing is taking the tax increment there, less your kind of typical operating expenses, that can be a little harder there because sometimes you have some capital costs here and there. But that said, we took typical operating expenses from the annual reporting that we do, just to kind of make sure you guys are all clean. And then when it comes to the electric, I think this is the more important one, what does this mean when we take on the substation project? You've afforded yourself some savings in the refinancing of the 17 overall, but understanding we are adding some debt service above. So like I said, I was trying to push this to a point where you still have some solid capacity and this is at your current rate. As I understand it, you are going through a rate case of the Public Service Commission, so presumably you'll actually be above this by the time that this debt service comes on. So just know even better than what's depicted here, you're at about $1.50 for every dollar of debt service, once you net out your operating and maintenance expenses. So you still would have debt capacity of over $100,000 there to kind of pay for additional debt, not that I'm recommending go out and borrow more, I'm just saying that you do have capacity there. I believe that was a concern kind of going into the last meeting, the 2020 audit depicted a friendly story, is what I'll say, so. The last page is just that kind of look at the interest rate environment and starts going down means positive things for your interest rate, of course. But needless to say, it is ticking up, a lot of people are concerned about inflation, as Mr. Powell likes to say, so we'll see, we monitor that for you guys. But if you have any concerns, believe me, I field a lot of questions from local government officials on the interest rate environment, so don't hesitate to reach out to Shelley, who can reach out to me, or she can give you my information directly.
Yep, I think we're good. Anybody got any questions? Might as well go over to the next one, huh?
Do you need to do the 2021B off?
I, you know, I would say I covered most of it, straight refunding there. If you have questions on that, let me know.
All right. Question action on initial resolution authorizing 1.805000 general obligation bonds for substation project. project. I'll make a motion. We approve the 1.805000 for the substation project. Roll call vote.
All righty, roll call. Scott Patten.
Yes.
Mitch Hossen.
Yes.
Tyler Munson.
Yes.
Terry Moyer.
Yes.
James Coyle.
Yes.
Mary Scott.
All right, so Munson passes. The next one is.
Did you get Jared? Oh, Jared, Jared.
Oh, Jared, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No worries, yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Good catch. All right. Discussion action on initial resolution authorizing $1,055,000 general obligation refunding I'll make a motion.
One second.
Roll call. I made one.
All right, this time I'm the first here. Jared.
Yes.
Scott Patten.
Yes.
Mitch Hossen.
Yes.
Tyler Munson.
Yes.
Terry Moyer.
Yes.
James Coyle.
Um, this is the combined of B.
Yeah.
No.
No, this, yeah.
No, I'm voting no, I'm sorry.
So A, B and C of these action items are A.
All right, and Mary Scott.
Being, what did you say, being the?
So the 1.805 and the 1.055 combined together is you want. The reason that doing that is because of the new money and the refund.
Two eight fifty, you're right. Yep.
Yeah, two, sorry, two eight, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so passes. All right, so then we'll do the resolution on combined. Discussion action on resolution providing the sale of $2,860,000 in the general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series 2021A. I'll make a motion, we approve.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Jared Bramerson.
Yes.
Scott Patten.
Yes.
Mitch Hossen.
Yes.
Tyler Munson.
Yes.
Terry Moyer.
Yes.
James Coyle.
Yes.
Mary Scott.
All right. And then the last part is E, which is the refinance. Is discussion action of resolution providing the sale of 885,000 taxable general obligation refunding bonds, series 2021B. I'll make a motion, we approve.
Jared Bramerson.
Yes.
Scott Patten.
Yes.
Mitch Hossen.
Yes.
Tyler Munson.
Yes.
Terry Moyer.
Yes.
James Coyle.
No.
Mary Scott. So, yeah, yes, okay, sorry.
All right, go F. Go on to F.
Good, before we do that.
Oh, yeah.
Forrester, Mike Blue. So with those resolutions passing, do you need anything more right now?
We'll, we'll offer a schedule and a contact and if you need to take action, you can take that into the.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
All right. Ryan, do you need anything from us now?
No.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, John.
All right, discussion action on community park grand reopening.
Who are we discussing?
Um, we want to discuss maybe an update. At the last parks meeting, we discussed having this event with the community park ribbon cutting to include run walk, parade and fireworks. We had a discussion of having a main contact to organize towards the village. Do you want to bring that up? I've had a couple of people volunteer to do that organizing and I want to make sure everybody is okay with what is going on. Terry, or Tom, Carol and Beth Marty have volunteered to organize us and be that main contact to bring all everything into one spot, alleviating the stress load off of our parks committee and our organizing it and some of our staff. I'd like to put that out for everyone and make sure we're good with that. For the village staff. Is that a paid submission? No, it's volunteer.
Well, I've got kind of a statement to make now. The Village Park and Recreation Committee is responsible for the creation, maintenance and safety of our parks. Budgets are submitted in November for next year's expenditures. This is true of all committees. I didn't know that Tom and Beth were there, so I knew that we were short-staffed and that the village was taking on oversight and fiscal reporting, but it's not really a village responsibility or park responsibility to be involved. We've not received any financial statements through the Chamber of Commerce to the best of my knowledge. And now I, there was something that happened in a personnel committee. I was unfortunately unable to attend, whether it was the committee or the whole board. And I learned that funds were voted on at the meeting to be earmarked for the event. Is this?
Total amount was not, right?
Up to.
Up to.
Yeah.
That is correct.
So the ships set sail to spend taxpayer dollars. In my opinion, you know, yeah, we've all, you can't thank the volunteers enough for everything that they're doing. They're behind the eight ball and it's been incredibly tough year for everybody. It's a good catalyst for our businesses to increase sales and profits, but the lines have been blurred, you know, as to where money comes to support this event. And it's up to the Chamber of Commerce to provide the needed revenue generators to be able to buy the insurance, sponsor and organize through nonprofits, advertise and promote through membership and volunteers and to not rely on taxpayers for funding. Taxpayers already pay for the efforts that our administrator, Public Works, Vanguard, Electric Utility, Black Earth Fire Department and the Black Earth Police Department to help with setup of the organizing of the electricity needs, setup of the maintained parks, fencing, water, sewer costs and security. So I guess what I'm trying to do is get a feeling from the rest of the board and, you know, $10,000 is $8 on the population signed, every man, woman and child. I don't think that taxpayers, they're already on the hook for making those parks nice, keeping them up, going with it. And now we're spending money to do things that I'm in opposition to, basically. We could go from there on the discussion.
I think that's a little skewed. It's, it's not just to take over on field days. This was for the real grand reopening of the park is what.
There was a grant money for that, right?
Well, and, and that's through economic development funds and stuff. But, so that's kind of where it is. You know, the, I think the rest of it came into where it was cheaper to run it through the village for insurance reasons, but that doesn't mean the village is fully in charge of it or, you know what I mean? That was kind of talked about at the parks meeting. But personally, it's something that the village can't find every year. This is a grand reopening. That's kind of why I was for it and it's kind of to get it going and let's see what happens after that. I'm definitely not, we're funding it every year. Can't do that. But that, that's what came to it. You weren't here during that meeting, but I mean, that's kind of where, how it came about and what, so.
What meeting was that brought up at?
Personnel meeting that was posted.
Yeah, the personnel meeting, so that was one of the agenda items?
Yes, it was, correct.
That money also already budgeted for of the.
Well, it's part of economic development.
Part of the economic development. So it's not. Getting to Scott's point of it's, it's been budgeted and it's in the budget, right? It's not an additional cost.
Right.
Taxpayers are not going to see an additional $8 per person.
Correct.
Already.
But the funds are being spent on things that we would normally spend on.
Yeah.
Is my. And the ships that sail, I know that's my hope that this is one time for taxpayers, the village trustees, park and recreation committee will keep the parks looking nice so that the Chamber of Commerce and nonprofits can fund the events on their own down, on the road.
I disagree with that. Yep.
That's a fair statement.
Yep. I, I think the thought was since it was part of the grand reopening of the park and everything else, that it was a good, good time for economic development to step in and help with this. So that, that was the concept, I believe, is how we did it, so.
But economic development hasn't had a meeting for a while. Do they need to have a meeting first before we can vote on it?
The board, the board actually votes on the money.
Yep.
Not economic development.
So they're not even in the conversation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, what it started with, Mary, is of course Parks Committee took it off because it's a community park. So the first conversation was, do we want to do that? We got grant dollars that require us to do, add a plaque, the county's logo and whatnot. Do we want to do anything? And that's where it blossomed from that conversation at Parks Committee level.
And then came the board.
But at this point, Tom and Beth have agreed to act as. Yes.
If, if we want them to.
And they're part of the parks and rest?
No, no, they are.
They're just interrupting, they're just interrupting helping.
Yeah. So they approached the.
Yeah.
Chamber of Commerce?
No.
They approached the village. Guess that's why it was brought up, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely. We've had a lot of.
I'm not going to do it, so I'm okay with it.
Community discussions have come back, concern about, you know, the naming of the event and field day conversations and just all over the board. And it just, it needs to come here for all of you to hear this and decide what do you want? What do you, the village board, want to see for that? It's you, it's your community. That's why it doesn't care.
But it's the chamber's baby, right? They've already named.
Well, is it? No, not early.
The chamber was not going to have any events at all. Although we stepped in as a request from the village to help, give ideas.
Right.
From, you know, help promote, do whatever we can to help.
Right.
We have zero funds to.
Insurance.
Financier.
Right.
So that's, we're here as an assistant and we're running a couple of things.
Right.
Yeah.
Because I got your email and.
Yeah.
But it's been named already and everything, the event and, you know, the T-shirt thing and.
Well, that was from our original parks meeting. And then since that happened, Shelley has heard negative comments about potentially the name being called something other than.
I have too. I have it, I've heard that too.
Phone calls about it.
I mean, we have, like, the chamber has no preference at all because it's not ours.
Right.
So we just need to know what it's called.
Yep.
So we can promote it. Yeah, absolutely. And, and as far as funds, I guess it's, since it is going forward, hopefully sponsorship will offset any of the expense. And I would love to believe we can arrange all of it, but we are short time frame, so if we want, it's going to take all of us to make it happen if it's what you want.
You got anything to add? Jared, you're kind of with parks there, so.
Yeah.
Is there something I can explain, right, or is there?
No, I, I, you know, I kind of, I'll talk about everything here in a, that we've covered. I, I agree with both Scott and Mitch, you know, as far as taxpayers' money go, the funding and stuff like that. And the original intention was, you know, we as Parks Committee, as the village, want to help orchestrate this in a way so that it actually happens. Because with the timescale and with the way the last year and a half has been, you know, everyone's kind of had a hardship. So we're looking at this coming from the approach that we want to do what we can to give everyone in the village an opportunity to kind of have that experience again. So, so with that said, yeah, next year, we don't plan on directly funding it in the same way that we are this year. But with that said, we also want to get a more of a head start on it, you know, sooner than six weeks ahead. You know, we want to start looking at getting this organized, you know, around January and and February and stuff so that we can actually get sponsorships and, and get all of that taken care of and not have the discussions that we're having right now. And so leaning into that, the, the name change was, we talked about the name change because this isn't Field Days, right? Let's just be honest, this isn't Field Days. I know a lot of people are upset that we're changing the name, but this isn't the same event. This is a reopening event for the concession stand in the park. Field Days was something different than this. So that's why we wanted to do the name change to make that distinguish. That being said, you know, next year, if we want to have an official Field Days where it was like it was in the past, then, you know, that's something that can be talked about amongst the organizers of the, the event. But we really were just trying to distinguish that this isn't Field Days. It may seem like it, but it isn't.
And Field Days is not happening next year.
Right, Field Days.
Right.
I, I think we just got to get that out there, true, right? That it's not Field Days.
Right.
That this is, this is going to take the place of this year because of the grand opening ceremony and we're going to celebrate it this way.
Yeah.
Right. Yep.
So of course Tom and Beth, in talking to them about this, felt that if there was any name consideration to be thrown is, could it be combined as community, community park Field Day? So that is a segue to the Field Days next year. Could it tie it together?
I personally don't have a precedent, preference on what it's called. Yeah. If, if it's going to make the, the rest of the village happy to attach Field Days to it, then, you know, let's, let's go the path of least resistance. And, yeah, let's rename it to Community Park Grand Opening.
Yeah. Be nice to tie it in, you know.
Yeah.
I just, I just have something to say. If you want to call it Field Days though, I think we're giving an expectation in that name.
Right.
That what is being said is not going to be what people expect. But when you tie it to Community Park Field Days, it takes it away from the typical recollection of Field Days in the park. Definitely. Because Field Days is just Field Days. But if you tie it in to the park and say Community Park Field Day, then you still maintain the historical part of the field, but it would not assume that it's going to be the typical Field Day.
Well, you just make it Community Park Grand Opening. And not associated with Field Days. So next year, well, it kind of helps to take Field Days. It kind of helps to go next.
Help keep it going.
The argument, um, the argument on that is labor concern that people outside the community are, we call Field Days, you know, they come here for Field Days. And without having that, we get them, or will it just be discontinued?
Well, if we put it out on social media, we'll get them because they're looking, always looking for something to do. I think if people were going to come to anything in Black Earth, they would come anyway.
Yeah.
I don't think they're waiting to see that name. Most of the communities around us have already given their complete list of exactly what they're doing every weekend through the entire summer. So I think they would be watching to see if there's anything, maybe they don't want to just spend every weekend in their own community. Maybe they would like to come to Black Earth and get out of their own community for a separate celebration. I don't think we should put Field Days.
Doesn't matter to me.
But I also.
Let's decide not to spend too much time on it though, so.
I don't think fireworks, if there's any, I mean, I know it's out of our control once we vote on this, it's, it's whatever anybody does, but I don't think fireworks. I think that's going to be a cost, it's going to be an expense, it's going to be hiring the person to do it, it's going to be a liability. I think I'd rather have the money go to fund things, um, to make the entire day.
Somebody sponsors all fireworks, does it?
No, no, but people are excited about putting funds towards sponsors who have shown enthusiasm to support fireworks. So that they, they're willing to give money towards that, so.
We have promissory letters from people that said that fireworks bill gives such and such.
They're not, I'm just telling you what conversations are, but yeah. Um, so that, that's not in our realm. What do we want it called and we need to move on, so.
So do we? So do we need to have an action or a motion about having Tom and Beth be the organizers of it and take that responsibility off the Parks Committee?
So, because we're really, I mean, we're tying ourselves to it then, right? So, you know, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
We're okay with it, we're okay with it, right?
Are y'all okay with it?
I am.
Basically, I'll be okay with it.
As long as there's a, a really good accounting on it and we get good reports back on it, worth the dollars.
The accounting will still come through here.
Yeah, they wouldn't have the option to spend.
But that will be through Tom and Beth, spend them the money or.
Right, right.
Whoever, but it's still, all runs through here.
It runs through here, so we'll get it, we'll get an accounting where every sound.
Every check is going to be sent here.
And cash donations like Mazamani, are we going to have buckets up for donations?
We don't know, that's up to them to decide.
Yeah.
We're not getting involved in that.
Then those wouldn't be accounted for, so.
All right.
So.
Somebody want to make a, decide what it's going to be called or we're going to move on?
I'd say leave it to the.
Yeah. Leave it to, we'll leave it to Parks Committee? All right.
To the Parks Committee?
Oh.
Or your.
Or the organization that's running it. I mean, there's the volunteers that are out there, um.
Well, I think Parks kind of talked quite a bit, but it'd be kind of, I don't know.
But Parks, yeah, I don't know.
I'm not saying they have to have a meeting to decide.
On their own.
Right.
It's community sponsorship, we're going to get that stuff out, we got to get it out, so.
With the name, the name.
Right.
Okay.
And it's a town that we have a community park Field Days, so.
Community, I mean.
It's, that's. We just need the name, that's all.
Yeah.
The, so the Parks Committee already talked about the name and agreed on Dirt Days.
Okay.
What?
Parks Committee.
Field Dirt Days or something.
Yeah, our, our last Parks Committee, we are, it was either last one or the second to last one. We all talked about the naming and there was pretty much unanimous, uh, around calling it Black Earth Dirt Days.
Why is it dirt? And why does it get dirty? Is that supposed to be like a, like, how many get dirty?
It, it was the only, uh, it was the only option that was given. It was, nobody kind of wanted to, uh, put forth a name to it and that was the only name that was given, so we went with it. So if there's a better option, I'm all ears, but that's the only option that was given so far, uh, other than what we've talked about in the last few minutes.
Can the Parks Committee make a decision with everybody there on Monday?
I think so.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, I think, I think we'll leave it up to Parks. I'm good with that. All right, any more discussion?
Nope.
Let's move on. Item G, discussion action on amended ordinance, amended ordinance 167 intoxicating liquor and fermented malt, whatever it is. What's this about?
Yeah, so as you may already know that, um, this year, Wisconsin Act 21 was, uh, put into place that would allow, uh, the sale of alcohol to be consumed off of the, to Class B license holders. So as a result of the law changing, our ordinance has to change and be amended to include it, which is what is in front of you right now. So due to our state law change, that we have to amend ours to include it.
Okay, and this cost us eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
I don't have the details.
Where did you get that?
That's in the financials.
Oh, I don't know.
Did you bill it for it, honey? I didn't think I'd seen a bill on it.
Well, actually.
It's in the packet.
Actually.
Actually. Actually, ordinance review, alcohol regulations, we're going to approve it tonight, eighteen hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents. How many hours did that take?
I don't know, she's got the details.
Okay.
And they've changed to itemized billing statements, right, Act Freedom?
I'm sorry?
Actually does itemize.
We're not, we're not on that, we're just on the, we're on an ordinance right now. We can talk about that during the financials. Um, and then we'll talk about the price during the financials too, so.
Right, and this is on payment approval report page one?
Yeah, I see it, but I think there's more behind that, I don't.
All right, so we'll talk about that during financials, so not for that. So I guess, what's the difference between it now?
Well, right now, we don't allow for the consumption or the sale of alcohol to go out the door from a Class B license holder and have to stay out of the program.
Right. They got sippy cups to go now.
So part of that eight hundred also included the school work on the school district property and attending the village board meeting as a result of that.
Okay, that makes more sense.
That makes a lot more sense to me.
That's, that's during financials, we're not on that, so. All right.
Okay, we're just with the license applications then.
So if this is Wisconsin state law then?
Well, state law, that changed, but we have to amend our ordinances to include it because our ordinance does not read specifically reverse your state law on this either. So recommending we get this added into our ordinance to make sure.
How did this come up?
I mean, this came up because of COVID and sales of.
I understand that, but I know, I know, I know the law changed and I'm okay with it, but we're in the process of, of going back and, and changing and updating all our ordinances anyways.
Yeah, sure.
We don't have to push this through so fast. What brought it up here?
No, I, I did not bring this up.
But who did?
That Bill Colton sent it.
So he, let's say ours and just sent it off with no recommendation.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
Can't do that.
Do what you want with it, but you know, try to make sure we stay legal too.
Yeah.
You know, why would it have an issue?
But if you're in the process of amending your ordinance and the state statute tells you that, so you, as long as you apply to the state statute as you go forward and tell your laws and amendments, we've already been illegal then, so what's the difference if it's another month or two?
And he's going to just bill us again when he looks it over, when he looked over all of them the next time.
Yeah, no.
I agree, I, you know, we're in the middle of paying them to do our ordinances and so I don't know why we got a bill for it.
I just, I just wondered how it comes, did he go to all the villages and, has there so many laws that change that don't get updated that, that's not just a, not a good excuse in my opinion?
Did we talk about it when he was here? That's what's making me wonder.
You know, I, you know, there was a little something, but I don't know what it was.
I don't remember the conversation.
Was it an enforcement issue?
I don't know.
During COVID when they were just walking out with alcohol? I can see why that was.
But even, even if we changed it to here, it was still.
But it's not in our ordinance.
As long as you didn't enforce it, it's not, you're not doing anything illegal.
At all.
You see what I'm saying?
But it is against state law.
If you don't enforce it, you're not, you're not doing something illegal. So you have to amend your ordinance.
I think, that's which is what we're doing.
If you did that, if an attorney sent you a new ordinance to update your ordinance every time a statute changed, you'd be changing every week. That doesn't happen. So this, we have, we should probably ask him because he don't just do that.
No, I have a feeling when he was here at one of our board meetings that this was.
That's, I'm kind of thinking that might have done some.
No, because if it was, unless I missed it at the personnel or the lab.
He wasn't here.
Okay, then he did not discuss it, that was not something that came up.
Not something that came up.
No, no. It was not, so this is.
Kind of the May 4th Village Board meeting.
Came from what?
May 4th Village Board.
And that was all about it, right?
It changed in the May 4th, but this wasn't discussed at the May 4th.
It, well, it was, right.
No, not this.
I guess I'm curious, I.
Look, what do you want to do with this?
Um, well.
Table it?
It's already in a, an ordinance, it's already written, I, I think we just question it. We don't question the ordinance, we approve it, but I just kind of wonder how we get to this point.
Yeah, but we're still going to have to pay to change it. So if we're already paying this other company to change the ordinances, that would be in.
What happens upon passage of this is this gets sent over to General Cullen and they, they do the incentive.
You know, I, I, something came, I remember a little, but I don't, I don't remember asking the attorney to take it up.
That wasn't.
So that's, that's, that's my concern.
That's my concern.
My concern isn't that it might not have come up because I'm actually thinking something came up, but it doesn't mean we asked, so. I just don't remember what it was about.
Well, it wasn't about.
Without going back to those, you know.
So what do you want to do?
Yeah, I, I'd like to find out. I, I think.
We'll question that on bill then.
We'll question it on the bill.
All right.
I think we go ahead and approve the ordinance, move forward, and then just question why it was taken up.
All right, we're going to move to the applications all had to change for anybody that, uh, serves alcohol or sells it, right?
Uh, what are we doing with D first?
Oh, you're only amending this ordinance. Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we amend ordinance 167 intoxicating liquor and fermented beverage ordinance. One second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed?
Let's just get clarification why.
Oh, and how many more are coming?
Make sure that these get to the new, our owners or whoever this replies to.
Yeah.
So that they know.
Okay, so it has to be published, it'll go in the newspaper and it's a.
Doesn't mean they'll, that doesn't mean they'll read it though, so if we can get a copy to all the places.
Okay. It is a responsibility, no, but it, it won't go, so.
And then I just want to make sure that he's not going to keep sending these to us.
Yeah.
More of these, I will.
That's during financials. Okay. Okay, so. Discussion action on operator licenses.
It'll have the new ones for Quick Trip and several renewals. And also, of course, the Shack has a new one as well. Um, Danny, you did checks, you didn't find anything, uh, any one of the applicants, uh, any conflict return.
The Brooks, Lewick, I don't know for, uh, Quick Trip, they didn't fill out the three questions.
They didn't answer the last three questions.
That's what I said.
Didn't sign it. And there was no answer to the alcohol awareness and Sherry Moyer, no awareness, uh, program answer either.
We do have those, we just didn't think we needed another three cut.
Well, if they're going to fill out, we're going to take the time to give them an application that needs to be filled out full.
Understood. But if you are, um, interested in any of their beverage server certificates, we already have those.
Okay, but the one that didn't fill out the paperwork? I'm not, I can't approve one that doesn't, just in case.
The one that's unsigned needs to be signed.
Brooke.
No, I think that was Deanna Neff changed.
Okay, I'm looking at a Brooke one and it's not filled out.
She wasn't answering to the last three questions on her, on that one.
Yeah.
And then what about for, uh, it looks like Sherry Moyer, she, it has two places of operation for one application? Do, can they do that or do they need a single?
They, they put it down that that's where they're employed at, um, but their application is only good for the village of Black Earth.
Okay.
Cannot be used any longer than just.
Yeah, that was kind of what I was wondering since that was Mezzo.
Brooks, we cannot approve, I think. But that's.
I agree that we cannot approve Brooks Lewick because it wasn't in favor. Or make a contingent of some of the coming down.
Right.
Well, yeah, then.
Yeah, but does it want to know the answer?
I mean, I'd like to, I wouldn't approve it if it, she's got two or three W, we ordered the.
But you did a background check on her?
That was twenty years ago.
Background check's been done on her already. Um, we did not find any violations. And we do know it's here.
So I'd move to approve all license applications with the exception of Deanna Neff, Brooks Lysik and Sherry Moyer until those applications are completed.
Can you say that part again?
I would move to approve the license application submitted with the exception of Deanna Neff, Brooks Lewick, Brooks, I don't know how to pronounce that last word. Lewick.
Yeah.
And Sherry Moyer until they, uh, answer those questions and sign their.
I'll second.
Until application is completed.
Till application is completed.
I think the Sherry Moyer's I have shows the answers are, or questions are answered and it's signed.
How about the alcohol awareness program?
Oh, but you have certificates for that, right?
Yeah, but it, there's a question on application that says yes or no.
Yeah.
Yeah, got it.
They also have documentation that shows.
Oh, oh, you're saying it's completed, she just circled no, okay, I see. Got it. Sorry, I missed that.
Do you have that file? I think she's got one.
I think if she sent proof to that question, it'd be silly not to deny it. So.
Did you include DeNora Neff in that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's Brooks Lewick and Sherry Moyer.
I know a year ago, well, she, she's looking for documentation, but a year ago I said, there was somebody at, um, the BP that was, we had to give a license to because we don't have anything strict on a rule that says that we can discern based on a record. Um, we can't deny, um, their application. So, um, so like Tina Mallett, um, she's got a suspended license and two DUIs in two thousand and two, and I know that that's, so that's a long time ago. But are we interested in making our policy very clear in the form of written policy? That if we have somebody that has two DUIs and a suspended license more recently, that we don't have to approve? Because right now we really just pretty much have to, they've done the work, we have to do it. Well, we had to see that guy that has.
I've said, I've said notable question that had to.
Sherry Moyer had a notarized completion.
But they got it anyway.
Get on that.
Well, I have.
Okay, so is the application match the, did, did she fill out the application?
Well, she turned me in with it.
Okay, did she say yes or no?
She said no.
But yes, she provided proof of completion.
Right.
I have her come in and change it to yes.
If we're giving them a literal license or a license to serve and distribute, I think they need to be able to fill out a simple application. It gives me more confidence in the fact that they're not serving a fourteen-year-old. I would rather them come in and fix what they didn't do right. It's not like a.
And that's what my motion kind of told me.
So, no, your motion was to deny it.
Was to deny until.
Until it. Till completion.
Well, okay, so once they're completed, then they get issued?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. All right, so we got a motion by Scott, second by me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, discussion action on CMA R Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash zero two.
This was before you last month. Um, however, we couldn't get our grading report until.
Yeah, yep.
We did, we got a grade A.
So is this resolution just to get it on file?
Yeah.
Yep.
Understanding? Okay.
I think it was already submitted enough.
Well, I make the motion that we pass this resolution, make this resolution, it's all in order.
Yep.
Got a hundred percent.
I make the motion that we pass the.
I'll second.
Okay, got it, Terry seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abolished. All right. Discussion action regarding Village Board Minutes six one twenty twenty. Twenty twenty one, very.
So, um, five H, we had a motion to postpone until the next meeting? Was that supposed to be this meeting, or was that a determined next meeting?
I did not put it on, it would have been for this meeting, however, I don't have the legal language for, um, um, the engineers.
Okay.
Move that.
Well, then I'd make a motion to postpone until next meeting.
Uh, we don't, we don't need to get it right now, we'll do it on business.
A minute, you're, you're.
Just minutes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion with three minutes.
Second.
Who seconded?
Jared.
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 I don't know.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Discussion action on treasure and financial reports, there we go.
Okay, so let me get your notes.
Okay. So I think we need to question why.
Let's, you want me to get your main treasures?
Yeah, go ahead.
For that will be down to invoices?
Yeah.
Um, treasury's report, alright, the treasury's report in itself is through May. At this point, we're sitting with about two point four million in all of our accounts. Um, at this time, our audit is complete, and we would like to do a presentation through the board at next month's meeting. I felt we had too much up here for doing this tonight. Um, I do have your audit booklet in my office ready for distribution. Um, also, ARPA funds have been applied for, uh, we will receive approximately seventy-four thousand, uh, into our LGIP account. We should see that within this month, and then the other half will be coming in twenty twenty-two. We'll have to start working on a project list, Matt and I have been discussing that, to start filtering through committees for approvals on some of those, uh, funds. So we'll watch for that at committee levels. Our revenues and expenses are through the month of June, where we should be at about fifty percent, other than the general fund. The general fund right now is sitting with revenues at twenty-eight percent, with expenses at forty-two percent. Remember, those general fund revenues will show, uh, will be probably well over our percentage when those show up at August tax settlement. That's when that five hundred thousand hits, that revenue account is in August, so. Second, just tax payments and installments are due by the end of this month, and then we'll settle in August for all those other taxes. On the electric side, revenue is at about forty-seven point three percent, with expenses at forty-three percent. Water revenue's at fifty-one point eight, with expenses at fifty percent. Sewer revenue is sitting at fifty-two percent, with expenses at thirty-eight percent. Expenses are being held fairly well in all of our utilities. Um, you'll see that on the agenda tonight, carryover funds, um, are in front of you to be approved. Those are funds after the audit that we did not expound, that cost us more on taxpayer dollars that we can bring over. We did plan for that in budget, knowing we weren't gonna have certain expenses last year. So that, and next month, revenue and expense reports will adjust, as long as it's approved tonight, those numbers are going to adjust on the report next month. Um, also, as a note, FEMA has finally contacted me regarding community parks, and we're with them and working with the customer emergency management. They are rewriting our community park estimate, if you recall, they lowballed up that fifty-five thousand using estimates from Home Depot. Um, they will have to rewrite that, we may be eligible for up to two hundred and fifty thousand versus fifty-five thousand. I will not know that for a while, everything's been submitted. Um, another note on financials, um, I don't know where the governor is on signing the budget, but if he signs that, as it stands, it will include a two percent increase in our general transportation funds, and an increase to our LRIP funding as well, if we apply again. It should be higher than the normal twenty-two thousand that we usually see when we've gotten that grant. Um, also, the LRIP funds have been applied for on Clearing Street, we are expecting forty-nine thousand from there to come in. I'm just not sure when the, when that will be released, I'm expecting it yet this month, um, so when we get to July's, hopefully revenues, we'll see that. So, that's what I have, um, those financials for you.
So, just a question on the electric. Um, we've always been in the red, about four hundred thousand dollars, is where else is money coming from, the electric, that, that they say that will be fine to make payments?
Sure, you bet, so part of that, it's a great question, and it takes a lot of diving into, um, when they, when the auditor and everybody talks about the surplus that we sit in, that's sitting in the electric, it isn't as far as a surplus in cash, what it is, is it's our capital accounts, it's the investment in our capital accounts that show that surplus. There's, uh, unappropriated funds in there, uh, I believe of around a million dollars from that audit that show what that is. And what it, what it is, it's the net investment in capital over the years. Um, it's a future benefit is what it's listed as when you look at it in our audit, so, um, it's considered like a eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar asset. But it's capital investment over the years, that is our surplus, that is what I'm told, so it's that's the way I can explain that.
So where would we see this money?
Where do investments come from? It's like.
Oh, probably from when you fix, upgrade things and put it in and.
Over, over time, so it's, it's from what we put into the system that it's, I, I wondered if when Zach did a whole lot of reallocation of a lot of our stuff, because that's when that really changed, honestly, that it has to be about when that changed, when we did all that.
Or your depreciation of everything.
Depreciation is a non-cash item, but it'll still show up as an asset, and can contribute to showing a surplus as well.
So there's no money sitting anywhere?
Not, no, it's underground.
So, I mean, it doesn't make sense that we, they say we can borrow if we don't have the money to pay it, and we're sitting in debt, almost half a million dollars, why? Or where do they get this from?
Well, when our auditor comes in next month to do the presentation, that could be a great question to follow up on.
Calculated.
She's got her memory.
Write it down, I'll read it.
Any other questions on treasures or financial reports?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Hold on, it's financials too, so are we gonna talk about the?
Well, treasury and financials, they just talked about the revenue and expenses, bills or dollars.
Oh, invoices, nevermind, okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the treasury revenue.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Alright, I thought the same thing over, James, that's what I was thinking. Um, discussion action on carryover fund resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh two. Six seven.
So, you have ten thousand in act and act development, but isn't that the money we just allocated to?
Well, yeah, but if you remember, when we talked about budget last year, not only did we budget ten thousand for this year, but we also knew we had, we were gonna have carryover funds, which is this right now. This is formally bringing in the money we did not use last year into this year.
So there's still ten thousand in the budget besides this?
Right, so the ten thousand this year will be twenty thousand. All of these accounts that are listed, um, we budgeted, we collected tax dollars for, but we did not use it. And this resolution, um, makes it, of course, obviously legal to bring them over into this year and use taxpayer dollars. If the DOR, Department of Revenue, were to, were to find, um, that we didn't spend taxpayer dollars we loving for, we could extinct. I don't want to see that happen, but this resolution, by bringing these over and using those funds, helps us with that situation. And plus, you already can see that we were over in some of our expense accounts, um, so this will also help that out.
It's like a firewall, huh?
Obviously, with COVID last year, training, some of that stuff should not be done.
Like I was, carried some over.
You know, even the wages, bribeingly gone for a period of time.
So you wanna make a motion? Alright, I'll make a motion to carryo, uh, approve the carryover fund resolution two zero two one dash zero seven.
What's that amount?
The amount.
There, I don't have a.
It's listed on the resolution, I see. Okay, thank you. You're a second.
I'll second.
You're a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Alright, discussion action on invoices to be paid, James.
Me.
I don't know, you were gonna say something.
No, I was talking about the lawyer.
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, yeah, the ordinance, how much, or, uh, ordinance review?
Yeah, so it's hard, he does not itemize, marrying, he does not itemize, so things are worried about, but his bill shows that he's got, um, one, two, three, four, five, six. Six entries for that class B liquor license, and then he has one, two, three lists for the school district property, and two items regarding an open records request that.
We have a copy of that, can Danny make a copy of that?
Good.
It does not list amounts?
Oh, it doesn't?
No.
So we can't break it down?
No, it's not. I know, I brought it up a while ago, that board and clerk does break theirs down, and that this one, is it actually doesn't?
And you said that actually would start doing that, that's what I heard.
If y'all wanted that, I did not hear anybody tell me that that's what they wanted, to actually do, I.
Should we hold on that next thing? I think itemized bill, his statement was responsible, I mean, we don't, we're sitting here right now, and we don't know how much he spent on this ordinance.
I think we, I think we need to clarify that.
Pull that up.
That's right.
Yeah.
Did you?
But, no, I think, I think we need to clarify, because we can do that during financials.
Okay.
We can talk about the bill. Um, I, I think we need to ask why it was done. You know, I do remember, and I, and I'm gonna be cautious about this, I do remember something like this, small, coming up. I don't remember us directing him to do anything with it.
No.
Yeah.
I'm on the May fourth minutes, and there's nothing on.
Oh, it would have been, yeah, I don't know if it would have been.
Did you say you, you said it was the May fourth?
I'd tell them the May fourth, we, you know.
But you know what, no, look at that, so the May fourth, his entries on class B are April.
Oh, okay.
So then, I don't know, what is it?
She said April.
Cause I was, I, I remember there was talk about hot pot trucks and margaritas and, no, about.
No, I was, I was the lawyer.
And, and that's why I'm being very cautious about us not asking him to do anything about it, because now I'm not sure. So. I think we, I think we just ask him.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
I'm not so sure we didn't do, I, I don't know.
Okay, I will find out.
So. I guess I'm just being cautious right now, because now something's ringing, I don't. Does anybody else remember that, or not?
No.
I remember something, that's why.
Yeah, so do I. And it's, I'll say open, okay, anyways. And, since it is, I guess since it is part of billing and stuff, I think we could ask him, I don't know. So, I don't think that's unreasonable, anybody disagree?
No.
No.
I had to itemize everything, every fifteen minutes, engineering stuff.
So are we paying it until explanation, or no, what's gone?
Well, it's hard to split out the other stuff from.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's what he means.
I think we just pay and then it, it's their credit.
Well, and, and, you know, the, the other thing is, since I do, I remember something, I just.
Well, let's just set it aside until next month, we've done it before. Until we.
We have done that, we have.
Done that in the past.
But, we're instead of having a whole thing covered with.
Well, we could ask him to itemize it for us.
Yeah.
And then all the bills after that.
After that.
So then, when, if he itemizes it, then she could, Shelley could pay whatever is not part of that right away, and then we can discuss it next month and the rest of it?
Be fine if they.
He's tracking time, um, or asking, uh, probably, I don't, I don't know, we won't know.
I'm sure they do.
Most, yeah. Yeah, they, they've, they've got a daily timesheet, if they, if they're doing it right. At least I do, I can go back ten years and tell you what I did.
Alright, so when we prove the rest of them, we can make that motion, so.
You haven't done it before.
Yeah.
Matt, can we do, uh, itemize things for the ATV people on the signs, like the.
Yes, once I get all the, once I get the, we are waiting for one more from Decker. Um, there should be one more invoice, so.
Decker came in, that's what I'm looking at.
Yep, and there should be one more additional one waiting on, yeah. But I think that caught my eye through the whole invoices, uh, it was on the first report, page three, was for mistake for a tire purchase, for Bobcat. So the story with that is, when we got the new machine, typically we keep the wheels and the tires, because we have a special offset wheel and tire for running down sidewalks. It wasn't until we started using the machine, it was discovered that the wheels and tires weren't really compatible, so two of the tires basically got destroyed, because they were rubbing on the machine. Bobcat said they would cover that, when I received the invoice, it did not seem like they were gonna cover that, so. I put a phone call out, sent them the invoice, they are looking into that right now. So whether or not you guys want to pay it as it is, or set that aside, kinda same thing, set it aside.
What's the, what's the two hundred dollar credit that?
That was the trade-in for our old wheels and tires, that are, basically the old rims, that were no longer compliant with the new machine, so. They sold us a used set of rims with brand-new tires.
All those.
Yep.
Who's that to?
Miss Lee.
So the ATV club, they're paying for the signs and the.
And posts.
Posts.
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve invoices with the exception of the, uh, issue that Matt brought up with Bobcat, and, um, getting the itemized, um, part of the actually bill.
Can we pay everything not to actually, if it's itemized, that's not part of the resolution?
I think we just hold the actually bill until we get it.
Only itemize, they can, and then every additional.
Alright, I'll second that, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Dan Gerg.
So we've been spending most of our time on the Mezzo here lately, um, with the projects up there, but we have been back here looking on some new customer work, both in home and out in rural, um, a few of our rural customers and new customers, um, building quite ways off the road. So we got one coming up that's about five thousand feet, um, to the top of the hill, so. These friends are at the end of this week, that takes a good chunk of time, so. Um, only good part of that is that is a large part of the customer contributions paying for that, so it would not come out of the village. Seeing, sort of big road. And also, we've been getting a lot more solar customers as well, so, and, I'm paranoid, so. Other than that, I don't have that much to record.
Okay.
What about the meeting yourself?
What? I, I was going to talk about that.
Oh.
That's not the only thing, yeah, I'll get there. Um, Vanguard Commission, Matt, um, talked about different work and stuff. How long is? What?
We don't want that.
Yeah, I forget now, the actual commission meeting was.
Last one, Wednesday?
Yep. The last Wednesday was, was a special meeting, that was not the commission meeting. Um.
On the twentieth, June twentieth.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Next meeting, I don't know, let's see. Let's see, what else we talked about, where you guys were working was Maisel, I mean, basically, was that, that was a commission meeting, was a pretty short meeting.
Uh, next meeting would be at, on the twentieth.
On the twentieth. Um, we did have a special meeting.
My re, my review was part of that meeting as well.
Yeah, right, uh, we did have a, a special meeting, um, last Wednesday, um, there's some things that came up with personnel stuff, and they're being renegotiated right now, and, uh, we'll talk about that later, so, after it's worked out. All right. Blackford Fire District?
We met on seven one, which was, I think Thursday, I don't remember, but it was seven one, and, um, uh, let's see. Uh, they finally got the S truck, I think it's called Tank Six, um, there was a leak in the tank itself, it's guaranteed for life, but not the removal of the tank, as all the great things happen with guarantees like that, warranties like that. So, um, they had a little help from some friends, and they pulled it, and it was welded, and they popped it back on, and now it's beautiful, so that's great, everybody's very relieved, because that's been going on for a really long time. The roofing guy has kind of made a mess out of getting the roof replaced, and they're dealing with Millers, um, since the negotiations began, the cost of the steel for the roof has gone up eight thousand, so, there are some more considerations in whether or not he can get the job done in time, um, in a timely manner from here on in, so that's two big things, I'm interested. And, um, I'm still waiting for Shelley, um, an answer, I think you said that you were going to ask our CPA whether or not, um, the CPA recommends, um, fixed reserves levied versus allocators' reserves that can be moved around. I had a homework assignment, and I came to Lord meeting, and I asked you, I, which one?
Right, I don't recall.
No, I'll call you, and I'll ask you the question again, they're waiting to find out, um, they want to figure out, not everybody agrees, they want to have some fixed funds that are levied, those cannot be moved, those have to be used for less big trucks. And then they can have allocated reserves that are combined, and then they can be moved around where they need it, and they wanted input from each municipality about that, before they make their decision, they're trying to see.
You know, and with our auditor here next month?
Good question, too. Um, the next meeting then is, it's missing. The next meeting is, September.
Either first Tuesday, or Thursday in September.
September, yeah, first Thursday in September, which is September, I thought it was August, I can't be right, I'm a little bit off, sorry. I'm missing my.
First Thursday in September. Second, oh, second to this.
Okay, so first Tuesday in September, September second, Thursday in September, September second, at six thirty, right?
All right, Dean Iowa?
Uh, we met on June seventeen. Two minutes, um, discussion, there was a discussion on the Wolf Adaptive Management Project to, uh, for the phosphate, or, yeah, phosphorus credit. All plans are signed off on, it's ready to start, we should be saving a hundred and fifty-four pounds of phosphorus taken out, which, uh, will get us, we need eighty-one for the next two years, and then the rest will go on to the next cycle's credit. So, we had, um, discussion on putting aside fifty thousand dollars for town, for possibly Town and Country, to do a capital management, um, project to, for future costs to the plant, uh, that got approved. Bill was, everything else was, no discharge violations, and just replacement bills, and bills paid. Our next meeting is July fifteenth at six thirty.
All right. ABC did not meet, Emergency Management didn't meet?
Emergency Management, I want to ask a quick question on that, because we are going through the hazard mitigation, and they've been doing it on Zoom, and it's, um.
Right.
Next one will probably start landing out more in person, I'm not sure how we're going to do that yet.
What's the next ABC meeting, Danny?
Hasn't been decided yet, should be soon, though. EMF?
Uh, we have not met since the last board meeting, uh, we will be meeting tomorrow at six thirty, that'll be July eighth at six thirty.
Okay. Library Board, Karen, no, I'm kidding you right there.
They met on seven fifteen, of which I was not in attendance, I wasn't going, sorry, very much, so I will have to.
I'll, I'll actually do it for you.
Oh, will you?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Um, they met, um, just did general business, nothing big, um, they did a couple of, I mean, I'll let her go through the programs they did and everything, um, they talked about, they bought it, um, they were going back, um, to Shelley with questions, and then we're going to work it out, so, um, next meeting, you can fill in on that, I, I didn't care, because I'm not going to it, you are.
When is the next meeting?
The twenty-first.
Yeah.
Of July?
Of July, yeah.
Are you, you're afraid of. Good, they're good.
I was a panic.
There was nothing major, and, uh, that was about it, um, there were some activities and some programs, though, that you could talk about.
Yeah, um, so we met on June sixteenth, um, we did some, like, general, just policy updates, um, we also talked about some of our library program, that's going really well, we've got a lot of kids signed up, um, and I've gotten a lot of great feedback on it so far, which is great, um, and we've also started doing outdoor programming for kids, um, on a weekly basis, so, craft afternoon and move it Mondays, Kirsten has been doing a great job with all of that, been doing it in the park, and she's had good luck with the weather so far, to the exception of today, so, um, yeah, um, and we're getting busier after reopening, um, and we're putting together our materials for the community park reopening. Did you have a question?
I did, what were some of the questions about the audit, because I know we approved an audit payment in here, so what were your questions?
Yeah, so a lot of our questions, um, were about, just like.
Dates.
Yeah, dates, like, and more is like, what do we do with this information type of questions, um, and just thinking about how, um, some of those changes would look, um, and actually, some of it was stuff that we were already doing, so, um.
The audit you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you have the, you received a copy of it?
Yeah, I received a copy of the library portion.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, and our plan for the community park reopening is to do a story walk, and then plus a booth with some activities for the kids. Um, and our next meeting is July twenty-first.
I'll be there next.
You'll be there? Good. All right. Public Works.
Well, since that was fishing, it was brutal.
Yeah, you were.
Got a chance to fill in, so.
Yeah.
You were busy, Mitch.
All right. So we did, uh, discuss, obviously, Vanguard's budget overview, uh, we talked about, uh, they hired, um, Josh, um, storm, storm damage none experienced, clearing street lights, all were good, um, what was the order next step, that's fine, discussed, they did that, talked about the creek cleanup, what we can do, where, how, best way to go about it, right?
Yep. That's our map, worked out with, uh, Town and Country, and so that'll be at next Public Works meeting.
Yep.
And what we want to start hitting, and now that Shelley has some of the ARPA, ARPA funds, right, coming, and we might know where we can utilize that.
Well, we talked extensively about, uh, water exception request policy, and how to best deal with that, to prove that's true, and, and what to do, and how to do it, um.
Does anybody know what that is?
I was just going to say, it probably.
Water exception is a resident can come in, and if they have watered their lawn, or filled their pool, they can request an exemption from their sewer charges for that amount. Certainly gotten on the funding of it, it is not something the PSC wants our public to know about, however, many, many requests, but approving what they're giving us is a kind of a challenge, and we have no policy.
So it used to be, way back, and I don't know if one of you guys remember that, it used to be there was one exception a year for Philpore or something, not more than that, and then it, and I, I haven't read the ordinance, so I don't know if it's changed, um, and it used to be, and, so the discussion mainly was, do they get a meter to put on their hose to see how much they use, or can they, you know, is there going to be a, probably a charge with that exception, a meter rental fee, put it on your hose, we'll deduct that off your, and so, that's being worked on, so. Um, Matt gave us a report, which I'll let him do here, and they really didn't have much for training, uh, next meeting is July twelfth at one PM.
Yep. Um, so I've kind of been in a few meetings with the park stuff, Grand Opening, National Night Out, um, there was a request to replace the pedestrian signs, which are on the center line on Mill Street, and within a week, one of them experienced some road rash, I see already, it's got marked up, marred up type thing, uh, Mitch had said, you know, working with, uh, meter exceptions, so that'll be with Danny and Shelley, figuring out how we want to handle that. Maps for creek projects, um, seeing what costs are going to be, and then moving forward with permitting, working with Town and Country to get permitting through DNR, stuff like that, of what can be done, can't be done. Uh, SEMR report was done, been quite a bit of brush chipping going on, all the ATV signs are up, um, like we talked in invoices, once all of those come to us, once all the invoices come to us, we'll be making bills out to ATV Club, so they can give us the funds for their signs. Quite a few meter exchanges for old meters, new installations going on with the new houses, um, Parks Committee had requested some landscaping to be done around Bugsly Shelter, at this time, we're just going to rip out some old landscape and put in some dirt and seeding, and then, uh, there's an old school bus out that area.
Stuff out front.
Yep, yep, um, old school bus playground structure, that'll be coming out, hopefully within the month. Concerts in the park, set up, tear down, um, and with that, there was a board on the shelter that Shelley and Scott and some other people had gotten, talk about how our park looks, so we'll be working budget-wise, but we got the board painted, so kind of the biggest eye source taking care of on that.
It did look nice at the time.
Thank you, thank you. Um, started to spray some of the weeds around town sidewalks, and on streets, you know, at the cracks and stuff like that. Cross Plains was in last week before the holiday weekend, just to kind of sweet streets, you know, clean up things, we did finish the water leak survey, because we had that seventeen percent audit report saying we were missing, but didn't really come across anything at this time, I know early twenty twenty, there was some issues with a leaky hydrant, and, uh, leaked down Mill Street towards Carwash, um, so, at this time, we're good, there's no leaks going on, so.
Or not good if we're filled seventeen percent.
But that's not for twenty twenty.
Yeah.
So, that's. Okay.
It doesn't just stop, so.
Well, it did when you fixed two leaks, so that seventeen percent was for twenty twenty, now that the leaks have been taken.
Oh, yeah, it's fixed, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yep, and you know, that could be, you know, meters are old, you know, there could be meters out there that we pick up over time, that stop and such like that, I mean. Calibrating everybody's home meter every single month. Right, yeah, for our compliance, you know, it's to change out meters every twenty years, um, just with past budgets and boards, we're a little bit behind with that, so hopefully, moving forward, we can start playing catch-up on some of those residential, and then some of the larger meters we have for businesses and that, so maybe that'll catch up with some.
When do they do the next, like, how did we find out in twenty twenty that it was seventeen percent, do they do it every two years, or five years?
That's just with your reports that you get.
Yeah, so what, the way that gets identified is we have to report all the water that is pumped through the wellhouse, all the water that is sold, so there's a difference, if we're not selling everything we pump, that's what they consider the loss, if we can account for it, whether it's the fire department doing hose testing, or they're flushing, we get those numbers from, uh, Matt or the fire department, but then there's other water that we don't know where it's going.
So when do we get that, I mean, how can we figure that out, when's the last time, twenty twenty, do you have the new information?
Every year.
So every year, okay.
So, one.
So we'll get one in twenty twenty-one, or?
Oh, yeah, it's part of the water audit that goes to the Public Service Commission, so when the auditor is here, he's not just doing the village, he's doing the water and the sewer and everything, and the electric, and then we get a big audit report, but the Public Service Commission, they have to file specifically the water and the electric to them, so we need to find, and that's where the loss is, so. So we're going to see that next month at the, you will see the annual PSC report where it shows that loss, I mean, I can print that out and give it to you, or you can mine, yeah, so.
Public.
Well, once we find out what it is, let's, I mean, we know, so.
Which, what do you want to know?
This is what percentage loss we're at.
It's on the PSC report, the annual report, so I'm happy to print it out and give it to you, and if.
In this discussion with, um, it was actually with Public Works, Town and Country was on that meeting, they actually said seventeen percent isn't bad, you know, once you start hitting like twenty-five percent water loss.
Then they start questioning.
They start questioning a lot of things, PSC starts questioning, you know, but as far as Town and Country, you know, with municipalities and stuff they've worked with, you know, seventeen percent, they said is actually, I wouldn't say acceptable, but it's pretty good, and, you know, I mean, you're never going to get to zero, it's just not going to happen.
Do you want me to sound that piece of it?
Well, unless hydrants, you really, you're.
Yeah, you can't, you're, yes, yeah.
That's more like a lot of pages, so.
Well, you don't need to, I mean, just, yeah, a one percentage.
But anybody can look at that anytime online, it's public information.
I thought it was at the twenty twenty three, and I thought that there was a state mandate that it couldn't go over twelve.
The only other, the only other thing we talked about.
I was just, yeah, I don't think there's anything saying, you know, Shelley said with PSC, you know, once it hits that twenty percent, they start watching, and Town and Country kind of said the same thing, you know, that PSC doesn't really.
And if the PSC's not happy, they will require a per water, but on utility, it's very expensive.
Um. Does Public Works have a, can you use a mag meter in conjunction when you're flushing hydrants, or do they make those big enough, or? Probably not, there's not big enough ones to do hydrant flushing, I mean, if you're going to reduce, yeah, you're going to reduce your flow so much that it's not going to really be effective, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So, it, like I said, Mitch said it's kind of a guess, I mean, we've done some house burns, hose testing, and I've been pretty anal about putting a hydrant meter on for those types of items, but, you know, if we get a structure fire or something like that, obviously, that's not going to happen, but hydrant flushing, excuse me, hydrant flushing is going to be just kind of a by-guess thing.
Yeah, also, we talked about sidewalks, and.
Came up in the agreement with shoebox. Yep, um, that was one of the things, shoebox, um, so I guess just, that'll be a work with Town and Country, making sure we get proper stuff through DOT, to make sure they're happy with us making the sidewalk changes. Okay.
Are they sharing the process with us then?
DOT?
No, I mean, shoebox.
We have to put in.
No, we have to put it in there, because this is crosswalk, that's a shoebox right now, is not legal, because it dumps into the street versus onto a sidewalk, and where the sidewalk would be going, it's basically just, from the conversation Mitch had. And where the sidewalk would be going, it's basically just, from the conversation Mitch had with Steve, was just that sidewalk slab getting them to the grass.
Right.
And then shoebox is going to put a granite.
Granite.
Walkway or something. Because they had no interest.
Granite gravel type of walkway over.
That's their cost, not ours.
Yeah, so our responsibility is just getting people safely across the sidewalk.
Yeah, DOT, DOT, the, the way it is is not acceptable, so.
And I think there's, maybe there's been one incident, so that's.
They're requiring, I'll say.
Yep.
All right.
Um, that's all I have for Director's part unless there's anything else.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Parks, Jared?
Yeah, so we've had two meetings since the last board meeting. Um, on June fourteenth, we talked about, um, well, we didn't talk about the elementary school because we didn't have any new information to go on that, so we're kind of still waiting to get, uh, more information uh, before we decide to move on anything with that one. Uh, we talked about park equipment needs and the vets park. Uh, both of those were also postponed until we get to our budgeting portion of the year and then we'll, uh, readdress, uh, both of those items, um, within those budget meetings. Um, other than that, it would spend mostly talk around, uh, the, the August fourteenth community event, uh, and how we're going to run that, um, lots of ideas and, and different things. Uh, one thing I did want to point out, um, in our min, our minutes from, uh, June fourteenth, we did talk about the naming of the event and did agree on Black Earth Dirt Days. Uh, so, just, I know there's some contention around that and we'll take it back and talk with the, the park, but there was an agreement on, on that name on June fourteenth. Um, outside of that, it was mostly planning, um, who can do what and, and talking about costs and budgets, um, as far as getting musicians in and, uh, different activities throughout the day. Um, so I won't go through all those. Now, our next meeting is next Monday, which is June twelfth, uh, at six PM at Community Park. July, yes, we're not in June anymore, July twelfth.
At what time, what time?
Six PM. Uh, do we, I, we didn't talk about contingencies, if it's raining or anything, are we, we're just going to tough it out and stand in the rain or?
Yeah.
There's a shelter.
That's fair. Okay.
Okay, Police Committee met on Wednesday, June sixteenth. Uh, there was no public input. Um, Cartman issued, uh, reported a hundred and seventy-six calls, a hundred and sixty-four by contract deputies. Uh, there seems to be a lot of gas drive offs that continue at QuickTrip. The landlord tenant issues moratorium ended evictions, um, that was discussed. Twenty-nine citations were issued for the month. Um, we're finding good information from our speed boards. Um, I think personally, uh, it gives us a good idea, so those can be, the one can be moved. And, uh, so if anybody has any suggestions or ideas on the board, more than open to, to, uh, placing that board where we think there's a lot of speeding going on.
Red Hawk and Seventy-Eight. I know that's where Penny gets a lot of people is Red Hawk and Seventy-Eight, Nicole Cordelia.
I've saved a lot of people speeding tickets because they tailgate me going to speeding. They never say thank you in town.
Just pull over.
You, hell.
Okay, according to, uh, the deputies, the, um, masks are supposed to come off today. Are they off? I didn't, I didn't know what to do.
For county employees.
Yeah, county, but today's the day that they get to be free. Um, um, coffee with the cop, county gave okay to start those activities back up. That will be starting in September from nine to eleven AM. Uh, Dane, there are no Dane County updates. National Night Out is August third at Wisconsin Heights, this is the countywide NNO. Um, everybody should really be planning on going to that if you can. Um, landlord tenant information can be set up again. Uh, working on an active shooter presentation, they want to, they were, they had to reschedule it.
It's done stuff for October twenty-fifth.
October twenty-fifth. And that's going to be held here?
Here, it's on Monday evening.
Okay. At what time, Shelley?
I think six o'clock.
Um, fire and EMS blood drive is in December. Um, policing resources and needs, we obtained a quote to fix the lock on the door and replace the door from a force. Um, the door replacement may be something that'd be looked for in the budget into, in and into twenty twenty-two. Um, there was a motion to approve and repair the lock on the door at this time, that motion passed. Um, we're trying to make an effort to get the police department to start using QuickTrip as the place they gas up, uh, as a deterrent to some of the drive off events and also it presents a more of a community policing feel and hiding in Senex and not being able to talk to anybody. But as I found out from Mitch, when the pumps are not going to be reevaluated or.
Eventually, right.
Eventually, and that will end Senex gas and that, that, I guess Officer Vinnie tried the card and it was declined and I don't know where that.
That was part of the QuickTrip card?
Yeah.
The QuickTrip.
Yeah, but there's Senex.
There's Senex fleet cards do work at QuickTrip.
Okay. All right, um, that's my report.
Next meeting?
Next meeting will be July fourteenth at five PM.
Okay. All right, number seven, any other business that can be brought before the board for future agendas?
So, we have three things that I saw, the Perrell ditch legal language. Um.
And what was that?
Perrell ditch, yeah, we didn't have a legal.
To approve that, right?
The, um, requesting calls, itemized bills, I don't know if we've already, if that doesn't need to be discussed if he's going to do that anyway. But if he doesn't provide them, then I think we're needing this discussion again after that. Um, and then, um, once again, I'm asking, can we shore up the policy on how we issue, um, on the parameters for issuing liquor licenses? If there's something that the board would like that would be more informative about if somebody has this and such and such, we can say no. For those.
Yeah, we have something, right? What's a denial of an authority?
I don't think we have anything in, because I've asked about that.
There's carbon or revenue and, uh, ATF regulates that, so we'll check to see if we can sue anything on that.
Okay, can we just get something next month?
We can't go beyond what they set for brand.
Because I know if you just had recent OWI, it could be a denial at all. Or if you have a felony, it can be a denial.
But if you're asking Mary, if someone has, uh, OWI, like two thousand?
No.
Yeah, I mean.
That was just the same for me.
Five years, you know what, that's what I'm asking.
I think it's a seven years and it's canceled out, but I, it would be, it would be nice if the board had a written, something written.
I think there's legal guidelines anyway, you have to follow.
I mean, it's basically, it's basically just, right, just saying, even if it's just something that's in writing that says we go by the deal, the ATF guidelines, period.
And there will be.
And, and the.
I just remember when it started, there was somebody that applied for a license from BP.
Okay, let's, let's, uh, either put, you should put it on the agenda, more than one person wants it. It sounds like it is, Mary?
Tyler, you want to know again?
Okay, no reason to discuss it. And then we'll get information and, okay, anything else, well, you had one more minute or not?
No, that was three, coal, Perrell and liquor.
Well, I'm going along the same lines of getting something in writing as far as setting the rules of what, for the water meter exceptions. Is that, did that be discussed?
That's still a public word, that's a public word later.
Okay.
All right. Meeting announcement, board meeting for August.
Yeah.
We've got towns yet, right?
No, well, no, August third is that.
That'll be National Night Out.
National Night Out.
Does he want to move it away from it so we can support us?
Well, I'm going to be at National Night Out, so I won't.
Are we going to have a walking forum at the National Night Out though?
I will, that happens, I will have to.
I have.
What? Hi, it's open, what are you thinking?
I have a family vacation the week of the eighth, entire week.
Eight through the fourteenth?
Yeah, eight through the fourteenth.
Can we just do the fourth, the Wednesday?
I'll be arriving home that day.
On the fourth?
Yeah. I'm, we're up in Phillips the last week of July and.
Do you ever stay home?
No. This is the only vacation I've ever had last of the year and it happened to be both of, sorry. But I will be home by the fourth, if we move it to the fourth.
Oh, you can do the fourth?
Yeah, I can do the fourth.
I'm good on the fourth.
I'm good with the fourth?
Yep.
Fourth for me.
Fourth it is.
At six.
But I won't be at National Night Out because of.
I'm entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second.
You have three legal seconds now.
I'll make the motion.
I did.
All right.
And I seconded.
All of you. Hi.
Hi.
Have a good night.